Welcome everyone to today's city council meeting, our work session on this lovely March 16th, 2021. We are grateful to have you joining us as we continue to hold electronic meetings. Welcome to the members of the public who may be watching our usual video feeds online. And even though we are not in person, this meeting is still considered an open and public meeting. As many of you know, there is no public comment during a work session. However, please join us for the 7:00 PM formal meeting tonight to share any of your comments. Your feedback is always welcome and you can share that with the city council anytime by mailing P O Box 4145476, Salt Lake City, Utah 84114, or emailing us at council comments at slc gov dot com, or calling our 24 hour phone comment line at 801-535-7654. We will now move on to our work session items. Our first item this afternoon is an informational briefing about the state legislative, about the state legislative session. And I welcome Kate Bradshaw, our city government relations lobbyist, and Rachel Otto, the chief of staff. So Kate, I will turn the time over to you.
Thanks for letting me come for a few minutes today, joining you back again from the home office rather than the state Capitol, which means my loyal dog is also joining this work session and hopefully no packages will be delivered during this time period. I thought I would just give you some kind of some session kind of overview. And then I know Rachel and I believe Mark have some updates on specific issues that they're going to brief you on. No surprise, this was the weirdest legislative session on record and in my lobbying experience. Conducted somewhat in person, somewhat virtually, often with a mask and lots of hand sanitizer. The lobby team, I think, did a very good job in a weird year in engaging on a number of bills. Just in terms of legislative counts, bill file requests were down over previous years. Bills introduced were down and the number of bills passed were down. You know, this was something we had wondered early in the session. Would their, would the oddities of 2020 and the pressures of the pandemic lead to reduced number of bills? And that was indeed the case, both in those that were requested, those that were eventually numbered, and those that were passed. All of the challenges of engaging in a remote session did still make it feel like there was plenty going on. In terms of the lobbying team, in the Bill Track 50 database, there were, there were 539 bills, so more bills than passed were tracked in that, in that system and evaluated for impacts to the city. And the department heads and those charged within departments for evaluating those bills did a fantastic job of looking at those from the lens of their particular department and giving us feedback that we used as the lobby team on actions to take on different bills. In terms of lobby team, our, our tracking list of active bills that we were managing was a little bit smaller, 167 bills that we had on a, on an active list that was derived from a subset of that bigger list of over 530 bills. And those were the bills that, you know, had more immediate impacts, costs, or policy considerations that all of you were interested in that we were working on behalf of the city. I'll give you just a quick update on a few bills that were passed that we were dealing with in that last final week, since we weren't able to do an update that last week with the pace of action. We were able to make some positive impacts on SB 243. This is, this is the bill dealing with both the inland port and the point of the mountain authorities. We were able to influence the sponsors to keep the open and public meeting standards that are currently in place for remote meetings. So a designation of a reason why it would be remote, some health or safety needs, and keeping those consistent with what we've all come to know and appreciate through the pandemic as being those acceptable standards for open and public meetings rather than not having to meet those standards. We were also able to insert language to ensure that, that any Salt Lake City taxing permit used to repay a loan, the big purpose of this bill was to set up these infrastructure banks and have funds to loan out for the two, the two authority areas. But to ensure that any of Salt Lake City's taxing permit that would be used to repay one of these loans had to be for a project that would be within your municipal boundaries. So it wouldn't leave and go to one of the spokes and the hub and spoke concept that the inland port envisions. Another important consideration was getting language that would have, as part of this, these loan applications be a consideration for best practices in terms of environmental impacts, that that would be a criteria that could be weighed and considered. Of course, we anticipate that there will continue to be changes to the inland port authority as it evolves over time and continue to have discussions with the key legislative players there about ensuring that Salt Lake is able to effectively weigh in and participate in this important authority area that's for the most part within your municipal boundaries. Another bill I wanted to highlight that the lobby team, in concert with League of Cities and Towns, worked, worked hard on and the lobby team did what we call a full court press. So we activated every, everyone to work on this was SB 204. This would have impacted business licensing or any type of licensing or permitting outside of your building permits and your land use permit. So this is everything from a permit to hold an event at a park, to reserve a park pavilion, even if you were going to do a marathon or a race of some kind, permits to open up cemetery graves or a place of headstone, all of that other category, the miscellaneous category of permits. And it would have been quite onerous. So we were able to rally the entire team and get our opposition on record so that we could have that bill held and it did not pass during the final hours of legislative session. The other bill I wanted to highlight, just to put on your radar, HB 217. This one deals with, with a new format of RDAs, housing and transit development zones. We do expect, the lobby team has been told to expect that this will be a continuing area of policy that the legislature would like to see evolve. And so this is one where we would very much like to put it on your radars and make sure that everyone is aware that we want to engage on, on that issue and help continue to structure these new, this new RDA idea around housing and transit zones so that it can meet your policy directives as a city. And no surprise, the largest category of bills, largest single category of area of bills that, that the lobby team worked on dealt with law enforcement. There's a significant number of bills, some that we were definitely in support of from a city perspective, others that we had concerns with. A number of those managed to move through. Those that, that were able to advance through that follow your policy directives include additional training for dealing with situations involving opportunities to de-escalate and to make sure that the police are using the right tactics to have situations calm rather than escalate. Reporting, standardizing reporting for different incidences so that we can have better data across all of police in the state of Utah in terms of use of force and when, when weapons are drawn, things like that. Some, some of the bills that were maybe a little more specifically aimed at some of the events from last year did not advance in that category. Second area of concentration would probably be those bills dealing with homelessness and housing, where again, the lobby team spent significant amount of time working to insert pieces into bills at your direction to make sure that they reflected the, the concerns and interests of the city. And then we had, you know, a lot of, a lot of bills that dealt with just kind of miscellaneous things. But, but law enforcement, housing and homelessness were by far the biggest area for the 2021 session. With that, I think, Rachel, did you want to chime in or Mark on the, on the two bills you wanted to talk about?
Thanks, Kate. I will just chime in to say that we had asked Mark Cattrell to give an update on the law enforcement bills, but realized we probably didn't have enough time today. He gave a very comprehensive update at the racial equity and policing meeting last week and we're happy to get you that list if it's helpful to council at all. And we had another, oh, and here he is, in case you do have any specific questions. Thank you, Mark. And Katie Lewis will talk about the bill that involves COVID and emergency powers during the pandemic, but she'll, she'll talk about that during our administrative updates on the next item on the agenda. So that's all. Thanks.
Council members, do you have any questions for Kate or Rachel or Mark? I don't see any questions. Mark, the, I do have a quick question, just to make sure that I was right about this. The, I don't know the bill number, but what we called the riot bill, that did pass, correct?
There was an HB 58, which dealt with amendments to statutes dealing with riots that did pass. But the other ones that, there were other bills related to riots that did not pass.
Was, did the one that essentially held a rioter in custody until they see a magistrate? Did that one pass?
Yeah, that is a provision in HB 58 that did pass.
Okay. I wasn't sure if those were two different ones. I remember thinking that that specific thing had passed, unfortunately, from my perspective. But great. Any other questions? Okay, before we move on, I do just want to say thank you to Kate and her team for all of the hard work over this legislative session. There were countless midnight hour phone calls or texts or meetings and, I mean, questions and quickly answered by Kate and her team. And you guys did an excellent job, as well as all of our team of lobbyists throughout the city did a really wonderful job at advancing, or at least trying to advance or portraying the priorities of Salt Lake City that sometimes I think differ or seem to differ from the priorities of other legislators. But I think that we, this team did a really great job at trying to protect Salt Lake City residents and advance our policies on inclusivity and diversity and equity and the police reforms as well. So thank you for that. And then a big thank you to all of our department heads. At any point that there was a question involving water, Laura was on the phone or testifying or the airport or any number of different things that tend to affect our city. We have amazing, intelligent, hardworking department heads and teams, and they all did a fantastic job over time, I'm sure, in working during the legislative session, again, to protect our residents and our values. So just a quick thank you to our lobbyists and to all of the department heads. So thank you. I'm glad it's over. With that, thanks for joining us, Kate. I hope to see you soon. And we will move on to the next update, which is an update from the administration. We have Mayor Mendenhall. Thank you for being here, Mayor. Chief and staff Rachel Otto and Chief Administrative Officer Lisa Schaefer. So I will turn it over to you, Mayor.
Thanks, Madam Chair. We have a slide deck for you today because there's a lot of information. We wanted to make sure that you see and hear it as we try to cover all of it. Could we ask council staff to put that slide deck up?
Yes, just one second, please.
Thank you. Well, you can go to the next slide, please. And Katie Lewis is going to give you this update on the emergency powers shift. And then I will give some information about the American Rescue Plan.
Hi, Council. Hi, Mayor. Nice to see you today. I wanted to speak briefly about HB 294, which, as you can see from this slide, made some changes both to the executive authority to issue emergency orders for the COVID-19 pandemic and also the statewide mask mandate. So I will, I will address both of those. First of all, under HB 294, any executive issuance of an emergency will automatically, related to COVID-19, will automatically terminate when certain thresholds are met. And I want to remind you all that Mayor Mendenhall declared a local emergency for COVID-19 on March 10th of last year. So we have a state of emergency in effect due to COVID-19. That state of emergency under this bill will automatically terminate if these three thresholds are met that are listed on this slide here. First of all, the state's 14 day case rate is less than 191 per 100,000 people. The statewide seven day average ICU utilization is less than 15%. And the Department of Health provides notice that approximately 1.6 million doses of COVID-19 vaccine have been allocated to the state. Now, I want to be clear about that last point. It's not that that number of people have been vaccinated. It's that that number of vaccines have been allocated to the state. So my understanding is that we have not met any of those thresholds right now. We are at, the 14 day case rate is at 219 per 100,000 and the ICU rate is not below 15%. And of course, the Department of Health, as far as I know, has not provided notice that we have received that many doses of the vaccine in the state. But when those three things, and it is an and, so all three things of those have to occur, then the declaration of local emergency that Mayor Mendenhall issued on March 10th of last year will automatically terminate. That's significant to us because you probably recall that in this past year, the mayor has exercised her emergency authority and issued a series of declarations waiving certain ordinances, deferring city loans, allowing businesses to operate outside and waiving certain ordinances to do that. Another example is waiving the requirement under city code that donations to the city go through a certain process. So there are a variety of exercises of emergency authority that the mayor has done. Those will also terminate when these three thresholds are met. So we are right now working to compile that list and come back to the administration and the city council with ideas of which of those might need to be, or we would suggest that we codify them or create some sort of process to assist those businesses that it might be a real sharp and, and shock to them if, if these relief items went away. So that's the first thing that HB 294 does. The second thing that it does is that it terminates the statewide mask mandate as of April 10th, 2021. Now, there are some exceptions to that as well. First of all, as you can see on this slide, if there's a gathering of more, of 50 people or more and they're unable to socially distance, then a mask mandate can be in place. Also, the local health department, so that's our county health department, with the approval of the county legislative body can issue a mask requirement. These mandates, though, do terminate when the, the local emergencies terminate when those thresholds are met. Finally, in that middle bullet point that you see there, there can be public health orders for safety purposes for K through 12 schools that can remain in effect even when these thresholds are met. But they have to terminate at the latest on July 1st, 2021. So there's some moving parts there and some things for us to, to deal with on the municipal level, both for masks and for our emergency orders, but that's what HB 294 does. One other point that I'd like to make is the, the connection between all of us meeting remotely, as we are now, and HB 294. So as you recall, and Council Chair Fowler, you read in every meeting the notification that we are meeting remotely because there are significant public health risks to meeting at an anchor location and having the public there. That language is not specifically tied to the declaration of local emergency. So if our public bodies determine that there are still health risks to meeting in person, that choice to continue to meet remotely does not have to be tied to these thresholds. In other words, you could continue to meet remotely if you determine that there is still a significant public health risk to coming back to your anchor, anchor location and you continue to make those declarations every 30 days. I welcome any questions, but that's, that's my update on HB 294.
Thank you, Katie. Council members, with the screen up, I can't see everybody's.
I'm Chair.
Yep, go ahead.
Just a question. So there were multiple emergencies. Some were not related to COVID-19. Do, I'm thinking of the earthquake and the windstorm. Do those remain in place? Or do those also terminate under this?
That's a great question. They do remain in place. However, remember that the mayor declares a local emergency and then exercises powers pursuant to that declaration. And the earthquake and the windstorm don't have that same number of emergency powers that have been exercised, so they would remain in effect. But really, the bulk of what the administration has done resides under the COVID-19 emergency, which would terminate the other two.
Thank you. When we say there were like 17 proclamations made, within those proclamations, there are declarations and exercising of powers, both within a proclamation. Is that right?
They are separate documents. So state law allows the mayor to declare a local emergency. And once it's declared, then she can exercise powers. So she declared the COVID emergency and then throughout the past year, there there has issued a series of proclamations where she exercises specific powers, but they're all tied to that March 10th COVID-19 exercise or a declaration of.
Thanks. Yeah. So when we get that list of things that we may want to consider adopting or codifying, but can we also include the other emergencies as well, just so I can clarify for my brain what things are related to which emergency?
Absolutely. I will, I will tell you now that the mayor, there are no exercises of emergency authority under the windstorm or the earthquake. So those are just sitting out there as emergencies that have been declared. And the purpose of that is to ensure that we have access to any FEMA or other disaster money. But all of the, the real exercises of power that will be in that list will come from the COVID side, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Katie. Are there any other questions for Katie on this? Thank you. Yep. That was close, Andrew. I almost just cut it off and went on.
Thank you. I like the tension that brings into the meeting. Does any of this preclude the mayor from issuing restrictions on the city past those dates or those thresholds?
That's a great question, Council member. The and one that we are exploring because there is already some state law that requires the mayor to, to seek the governor's permission for exercise of powers that are more restrictive than what the governor puts into place. There's a little bit of play in that and, and we're exploring it. And I think that if there are things that the mayor would like to do to protect our city, we can certainly look at that and, and figure out if there's a path for it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no other questions, thank you, Katie. Good to see you. I will turn it back over to the mayor.
Thank you. And if we could go back to the slide deck to slide three, please. Thank you, Amanda. As Katie mentioned, with the statewide rescinding of the mask mandate, April 10th, we are, as we have always been, working off of our local data and with the county health department and the state health department as necessary. And that three, looking really at a three-week block of data. And so obviously, we're about four weeks out from April 10th. We're going to continue to monitor the trends in cases at our local level and the ICU utilization. There's some current stats up there in the slide for you. But we're prepared to request that the county continue that mask ordinance or be, that we be able to put a city mandate in place if the data warrants it. But know that we're monitoring that. Next slide, please. And of course, if there's questions, Council, please jump in. The American Rescue Plan, as you have surely heard, passed the Senate, the House, and was signed by President Biden late last week. And it's an allocation to Salt Lake City of 87, about $87 million. And we have our focus throughout COVID-19 from the beginning of the pandemic there with those three main points about cooperating and acting consistently with the state and county government, but on a timeline that's driven by our local data and ensuring that our recovery and revitalization and preparation for future potential impacts from the pandemic are all equitable efforts. And that we are open and willing to admit that we are all learning as we go through this. We're evolving our processes as we, as we trial, learn by the trial of fire sometimes over the course of 2020. But those principles still prevail as we work and anticipate the 87 million from the federal government. And we'll focus that over a number of years. Can we move on to the next slide, please? It's going to come in two chunks. We are anticipating the first one in the next couple of months. And the, we're likely to use that for household rent, so rental mortgage assistance, small business assistance. We can use it for infrastructure, including digital divide, addressing our digital divide. We can use it to support essential workers. And uniquely to this funding, we can use it for certain revenue replacement. So lost revenue to Salt Lake City can, through a certain definition, be replaced with some of this funding. So our next steps at the administrative side are to continue and finish up gathering feedback, ideas from our departmental leadership about the project ideas and needs that they see. We're going to bring together not only an internal policy group to put together a recommendation for you, but be convening with our partners outside of the city government, including the county who has definitely dollars that they need to allocate, but working with nonprofits and other community organizations to figure out how these dollars should be spent. We'll be presenting a spending plan to the council. And I wish I had a date for you, but this is all kind of happening quickly. And we will get it to as quickly as we can. And then, of course, the next steps will be holding those public hearings on the spending plan per your direction. Any questions on that part? Then I'll move on to the Community Commitment Plan update, if we could.
Madam Chair.
Yes. Oh, sorry, not me.
Sorry, Madam Mayor. On the previous slide, it said next year. Does that mean next fiscal year?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't think it's very clear yet, honestly.
And if I, if I may, Madam Mayor, one thing, and I think you sort of mentioned this, but we do have until 2024 for the spending. So that, I think, is a good thing so that we can, I hope, focus on some of the short-term relief that we need, but then also be able to spend some of these dollars on the, on the long-term relief that we're going to need as well. And so it's nice not to have to run around with like chickens with their heads cut off and spend it immediately. That is kind of what it's felt like with the other CARES Act, even though the administration did an amazing job doing that. It will give us a little bit of time to make sure we're planning for the future as well, I believe.
Thank you for bringing that up. And I just forgot to put that into the slides. The 2024 is when the funds expire, which I think when we, we've done a lot of, as I think just as individuals, thinking back over the years, we marked that one year since the first case in Utah and the first emergency order last week. And even though we didn't know what was going, what all was going to happen and how big the impact would be, I had a sense then that this was going to have an economic impact throughout my first term. And it's wonderful that we have these years of room to sort of plan for and, and support our economy, but mostly our residents as we, I, we've got to come up with a different word for return because we're not, we're not coming back. We're going to go forward in a new direction. And these dollars will really help us to get there. Okay, next slide, onto the Community Commitment Program. And as you know, we started the Community Commitment Program last fall with many service provider partners, which I'll show you in just a second. And just like I reiterated, our principles for the navigating the pandemic at the beginning of the deck, here again, our, our three principles around in our commitment, around the Community Commitment Program, treating everybody with respect, everyone altogether, residents, visitors, those experiencing homelessness, those who are housed, business owners, maintaining our public spaces that are clean, safe, and accessible, and using law enforcement intervention to address criminal behavior, not to punish poverty. So you can go on to the next slide there and I'll just remind you who our social service partners and public health partners are. There's a great many. And going on to the next slide, please, Amanda. Thank you. And I wanted to give you, I don't know if, is part of the slide obscured for you all or is it just me? Yes, that stuff.
I don't see it either.
Amanda is moving it. Thank you so much. I wanted to give you some totals from the Resource Fair efforts that have happened. So there's three identified there, the Toffler Park, Camp Blast Hope, and Cornell Street Resource Fairs. And just for understanding, the Seventh South and Fifth West, those were when our COVID numbers were spiking, and it wasn't safe to establish a sort of mass gathering of Resource Fair. But know that the service providers were out there doing the work over the course of the couple of weeks that the focused in, and services were being offered. So it just wasn't concentrated into a single day. And over that course of time, 176 individuals have been made placement offers, or rather, 176 individuals have been engaged, 131 placement offers. Forty-eight people said yes to those placements and four more accepted placement in a detox bed. Our courts heard and resolved 130 cases for 112 people, and 29 people were connected with the Driver's License Division, which, as you know, resolving those outstanding court issues and having identification helped clear up some of the biggest barriers to accessing housing. And two individuals involved in human trafficking were also identified by the service providers, and the providers were able to connect those individuals with services that are particular to that form of trauma. If there are any questions on those totals, we'll go to the next slide, please. For the city, you saw that giant list of service provider partners. There's about 16. When it comes to the city, our heart team does spend the, the majority of their work time on CCP efforts. So on the weeks when there is a Resource Fair, they put in about 90 hours as a team. Every other week, it's about 40 hours while they're coordinating the, the efforts of the CCP. And intake, they're doing the information intake to help the team of all the service providers and CCP partners prioritize where to go next. Advantage Services is a contract that we have, as you know, and you fund it every year. That comes in and supports pickup, trash pickup, and they also support camp abatements. I wanted you to know that we had $80,000 in our FY21 budget, and it was gone by the end of February. That money ran out. We then backfilled that gap with CARES funding to take us through the rest of the fiscal year. But we're in our next, that next bullet there around police resources, where you get a sense of how many activities there were. It's a growing number of camps that we're addressing, and so that allocation with Advantage Services is a growing need as well. And then police resources are needed about 70% of the time at the request of our county health department because there, as their workers do their jobs cleaning up those areas, they have experienced harassment and interference by third-party activists or agitators and the outreach workers as well, who are trying to engage with the residents experiencing homelessness. So that's when the police department have been asked to come in and just provide that protection for everyone who's out there on the scene. In 2019, there were 640 health department activities that they assisted. And in 2020, that went up to over 1,000. And we anticipate about 500 more cleanings with different levels of PD support required throughout 2021. Any questions on that?
I do have a question, Madam Chair.
Please.
Mayor, so when we say 500 more cleanings, do we mean 500 more encampments or are we doing, or is it, let's say we have 10 encampments and then we do 50 cleanups per encampment?
I don't know that the health department has identified the, all of those 500 additional cleanups as encampments. They may be encampments of different sizes. And I don't know if any of the staff on the call might have a better explanation for that.
Mayor, I can chat in since I am here. We, the, the health department does a lot of cleaning of abandoned encampments and smaller spots where people have, have been but have left. So these 500 encompass a lot of different levels of service from the health department. And also, you know, that's kind of commensurate with, with our resources that we need to put into those two. So it's, it's a widely disparate amount of service that's needed for those 500.
All right. And so every time you have, the health department goes and starts, you know, trash, picking up the trash, the Advantage Services also goes with them to support them? Or are they doing, how, how does that relationship work?
Yeah, as, so the camp abatements, I think, are where Advantage Services may provide additional support. But as Rachel was just saying, the, the hundreds or, or over 1,000 health department cleanups that happen aren't all necessarily camp abatements, which would, or camp closures. They may just be cleaning up around an area. And, and as you can see, they, they ask PD to be there about seven out of 10 times.
Right. And then about that, about PD, how many, how do we determine how many police officers go to an encampment move along, let's say? Because I did go to one a couple of weeks ago and the encampment, maybe I got there. I don't think I was there too late. I was there at the time they told me to go, but they, I didn't see that many people, that many people company, maybe people had already left because they had been given notice. But we did have a lot of officers closing down an entire street. And so I was wondering if we haven't, you know, if we decide we're going to have 50 officers at this time or, or just 10, because it doesn't seem like it's a big encampment or so. Because it does seem like there's a lot of police department resources.
Mayor, would you like me to try to answer that? Yes. Um, Councilmember, this is something that Chief Brown and his team, mainly Captain Lance Van Dongen, work with the health department to try to determine what resources are needed for certain areas. A lot of it depends on the, the geography of the area where the camp is and what they feel like, what kind of perimeter they would need to set up to try to keep health department workers in that area clear. There's a lot of heavy equipment that gets moved in on a lot of these cleanings. So that's a big part of it, too, is there are front loaders and dump trucks and other things that, that create a hazard for everybody standing around. So that's part of it. And it really is dependent on the kind of intelligence that's gathered in the weeks leading up to it. You know, who might be there to, to try to interfere with health department workers? But we have made, I think, a really concerted effort in the last six or seven months to be very transparent about where these activities are going to be happening and try to give people, the people who are trying to assist residents experiencing homelessness, a chance to relocate, pack up their belongings. And I think that's helped quite a bit. So I think you're right. You know, sometimes there probably more officers are there just out of an abundance of caution. But if, you know, hopefully, as we, as we continue to do better, that'll require, you know, fewer and fewer police resources for these types of activities. And if the chief is on the line and would like to correct anything I said, I'm sure he.
I just wanted to thank the administration for that invitation to go and, and, and experience that situation. And there were, you know, the police officers were, you know, did a great job. Respect, you know, very respectful and trying to keep peace as some instigators were there as well. So shout out to the police department. Thank you.
Okay, well, I, I see Chief, but he's quiet. So I'm just going to keep going. You're fine. You get a spot later.
All right.
Unless you needed to correct anything, Chief.
No, that was perfect, Rachel. Thanks.
Okay. And obviously, these are staffing resources, but what underpins the whole operation of CCP is there being resources to be available for the individuals that we're working to connect with and to provide support and services to. And we can go to the next slide, please. We, every, everyone knows that we need more system. We, every, everyone knows that we need more system, we need more services system-wide across the state of Utah. Across the state of Utah, as we continue to be the nexus of services, which we welcome as a city. And therefore we attract and even other cities move people into Salt Lake City. I think in a, in a well-meaning way to try to get them more proximate to services, but we need these kinds of services throughout the state. And you, you know that Salt Lake City doesn't control that system, the homeless services system, but we invest a tremendous amount. We've invested sixty-five million in affordable housing since 2016, which is more than any other government in the state of Utah. We're the only city with a designated funding stream for affordable housing. And that was thanks to the Funding Our Future work back in 2018. And our allocations for affordable housing in 2021 are going to exceed what we did in 2020, thanks to these additional funds from the feds and from our new state and private investment that's coming together. And you'll see today in Budget Amendment Seven, that there's six million dollars in rental assistance for Salt Lake City residents. So tremendous amount of money, money. And there's a little snapshot of the housing that's been supported from Salt Lake City in last year's funding alone. Can go to the next slide. And you know, you start pulling on the thread and it all leads to another policy conversation. And that's why we've been focused on addressing displacement and gentrification in our capital city. That is happening as a result of, we have the fastest growing population in the United States of America here in the state of Utah. We have one of the strongest and sometimes the strongest economy in the, in the United States here in the state of Utah. Incredible quality of life compared to many other parts of the country. And there's a lot of attraction for all sorts of economic investment, residential investment. And that, those market forces are making it really difficult, as you know very well, as community level, city council, engaged people that we desperately want to support and foster the continuity of our historically resilient communities through these pressures. So Blake, I think Blake Thomas is on the call and I was hoping he could give us a quick update on the status of our displacement, displacement and gentrification mitigation plan.
Sure. Thanks, Mayor. Our department, the Department of Community and Neighborhoods, really appreciates the collaborative partnership between city council and the administration as we have a quest for holistic and strategic approach to address the city's housing crisis. Our team understands the council's apprehension on moving forward with zoning amendments that may impact our, our city's housing stocks, specifically naturally occurring affordable housing and historic districts. So that being said, our team is always proposing a multitude of housing solutions to tackle the many housing challenges that we have in the city. In terms of the gentrification study, Angela Price, who is in CAN or the Department Administration, and then Susan Lunnmark in the Transportation Division, have circulated a draft of the RFP to our department's division directors for comments that are due this Friday. Once those edits are made, the scope will go to the administration and finance. And also in parallel, Angela Price is working to get on the next Human Rights Commission agenda. Once the Human Rights Commission reviews the scope, it'll come to the council for a proposed approval. And it is our department's intent to have the, the scope to finance in the next month to begin the procurement process. So we're excited at the movement as it relates to this study. And the last thing that I'll say is myself, along with Angela Price, have been communicating with community advocates over the past couple of weeks. And we'll be meeting with them in the near future to understand their concerns about RMF thirty, our housing loss mitigation ordinance and all other things housing-related that are salient and on the table right now. I just want you to know that it's my commitment to live true to our department's name. And the foundation of the gentrification study will be based on an involved community engagement process. And we believe that beginning this process early will ensure this is a plan for the community and supported by the community. Lastly, our team in partnership with the attorney's office is looking into several immediate policy solutions to help with displacement immediately. We're still crunching the numbers, but I intend to bring a more immediate housing loss mitigation fix before the council to tide us over until the gentrification study is complete. Thank you.
Thanks, Blake. All right, the next slide. If we could go, I wanted to give you a little brief intro on part of the Budget Amendment Seven as it relates to the police department update. There's two items in there. One is the staffing that's related to the encampments and the health department safety that we just talked about. So that seven out of ten cleanups that the health department goes out on where the police department's requested to be present. And there's also an item in there around shifting the staffing for the communications director and the internal affairs director. There's some budget items associated with that. Next slide, please. So to the first one, when I, just to lay out what happens during an abatement, the county health department has that role around man, they're mandated to address the public health concerns. They, they have a mandate to do that, not just a direction. They post notices at least twenty-four hours in advance and they don't remove any belongings unless they're left behind. The city's role is around organizing the outreach workers to come ahead of time and during the event. So the weeks leading up and the resource fair itself, which we talked about during the city staffing part. The PD helps to keep that area clear for health department workers and heavy equipment. And they're not there to cite people for camping, but they may be forced. I work in a hallway in my house. They may cite people for interfering with the public health work if they need to. And then if an area is closed to camping, police resources are allocated to maintain the closure, just patrols and getting out, walking the area. Are there any more questions about what the police are doing in these abatements? Because this is really what relates to the budget amendment request you're considering in your discussion today.
Madam Chair, I have a question. Thanks. So, you know, we, we've seen, I feel like we've seen still an increasing encampments in different parts of District Four. I'm sure it's happening in the rest of the city as well. And so I'm getting a lot of emails from constituents, from business owners, from residents, you know, asking us, why, why are the encampments still allowed? And if it's, if it's, you know, if it's illegal to camp in the public right away. And here you say that the police department is not going to cite people for camping. And I guess the question is, are we ever going to enforce our own ordinances? Or, or, or this is how, or this is how, it's just be for now until we can find better solutions to, to help people experiencing homelessness.
Yeah, Anna, our council member, and I'll ask Rachel to chime in on this too. You know that there's some constitutional issues around forcing people to move or citing them for camping if there aren't resources available and shelter beds available. And part of the work around creating transparency of those systems is work that our administration has picked up over the last year that we believe there could have, there needed to be, and there could be more clarity around what those resource availabilities are. So Rachel, do you want to speak at all to the constitutional elements of that?
Well, as you know, I'm not a lawyer, but I do believe that our city attorney's office has recommended that we, while we're not bound by the Martin B. Boise case out of the Ninth Circuit, that, you know, requires there to be a good faith and available offer of space in a, in a shelter in order to cite people for camping. We, they are, they do recommend that we follow that case. So and, and, you know, just from a humane standpoint and from the, the philosophy of the city, we, we want to be confident that there are resources and places for people to go before we feel like we can really enforce our camping ordinances. That said, we do enforce them at times and I'm sure that Chief can discuss that if, if you're interested. But this is a tough one, you know, as, as we just, as the mayor just mentioned, we need more resources and we need to, we need more places for people to be able to go.
Rachel, I appreciate that you brought up that it's not that there are never citations for camping. But this, what we're talking about today and what the budget amendment is about, is about the camp abatements through the CCP. And through that process, there aren't citations given. That's not why the police are out there. But it doesn't mean that they aren't able and that they aren't exercising that at other circumstances around the city.
Sorry, thank you, Mayor. And that, that's right. And I didn't mean to confuse the situation. But the point of the resource fairs and the camp cleanings are really to try to connect people with services. And so we don't want to dissuade people from that. And that's, you know, simply by trying to be punitive in that circumstance. So we, we don't want to interfere with service providers being able to offer services to people.
Okay. And then a follow-up question, and maybe it's in the next slide or when we talked about, when we talk about the police department. But you know, there, there seems to be also a rise of criminal activity sometimes. And especially a lot of, you know, people really preying on vulnerable populations. I mean, this is real, it's happening. And maybe you will talk about how we're trying to, the police department is trying to mitigate crime in the situation. And I'm not sure if it's in the next slide or, but you know, it's not the real concern.
Yeah, it certainly is. And I'll say two things. One is Chief will, I think, be prepared, especially now, to address that during the budget amendment discussion on this item. But it's not part of our briefing at this time. And secondly, when our heart team is doing that intake of information for the sake of prioritization of the encampment areas, the crime in the areas is absolutely one of the factors that come into their consideration. And oftentimes, that may be what tips one camp to a higher priority for cleanup than another. I think that's the case of what we're currently looking at out there. That, thank you. Yeah, you're, if there's any other questions that I can answer, I'll do my best, but I know that Chief will be ready to go deeper into what the abatement efforts are and how the police are involved during your budget amendment. The last slide is just around the staffing adjustment that's in the budget amendment. And the communications manager, you know, has been vacant since December, since the PIO there left to another position and with another piece of government. And we are asking for a change there with appointed and at-will instead of a career service employee. And then doing that as well with an internal affairs manager, making it a professional position, which other departments, many other departments around the country have, not an assignment to a current police officer. We, we want to elevate the investigation affairs manager position by doing that. And again, Chief will be able to go a little deeper on what these changes mean and any questions you have as they relate to the budget. But I just wanted to give you a glimpse into why, why we're bringing you what we are. And thank you, Madam Chair, for your time today, unless there's any questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, are there any questions at this time? I don't hear or see anyone. So thank you again for joining us and for this information. It was incredibly helpful. We will move on to item number three, Updates on Rural Equity and Policing. And we have, I believe it's Allison. Hi, Allison. It is you.
It is Allison. Hi, Madam Chair. Thank you. We just have two quick updates today, as far as I know. One is just the usual reminder that tomorrow, March seventeenth, there will be meetings of the REP Commission subcommittees. School safety is at four PM. Policies and practices at four PM as well. Officer training is at five PM. And council members and any member of the public can listen in. You can Google SLC R E P Commission and you'll find the links to these meetings. The next full commission meeting is March twenty-fourth at five PM. The second is just to let you know, we did alert the commissioners last week to the briefing that we're having next on officer recruitment, hiring and promotions. We know that the commissioners have been very interested in these topics. And so we hope many of them will be able to join us. We also invited them, if they do have comments or questions, to join us next week during this time. That's it.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for Allison? Anyone? Okay. We will move on to item number four. This is a discussion on officer recruitment, hiring and promotions. And as council members know, but if people watching don't know, we're trying to, in our effort to create a little bit more transparency and knowledge around our police department, having once a month discussions on different policing items that interest us and our constituents. And so if you recall, I believe it was last month or the month before, we had the social work team join us and talk about their work. And now we are having Deb Alexander, our HR director, talk about the officer recruitment, hiring and promotions, as I mentioned. We also have Chief Brown, but first I'll turn it over to our council staff and let you give us an overview.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you mentioned, this is the next briefing in a series of discussions on various police topics. In January was the Social Worker Program briefing. And today is recruitment, hiring and promotions of police officers. The purpose of the discussions is to bring more information to the public and the council on existing programs, practices and policies. Highlight improvements that the city has made and identify areas where the shared goals of police reform and equity could be advanced further. As a reminder, in December last year, the council eliminated the Civil Service Commission and adopted an ordinance establishing merit-based recruitment and promotion processes for the fire department and police department. Since that vote, HR has been developing those policies and rules to replace the Civil Service Commission processes. Today's briefing includes updates on those changes as well as existing practices. I'll turn the time over to HR Director Deb Alexander, who has a presentation.
Thank you so much, Ben. Oh, good, I'm not on mute. Are you going to key up the slideshow, Ben?
I think Amanda has that. There we go.
Yay. Okay, so let's, let's just start in. One of the questions or many, many of the questions that we received, HR has heard over the course of the last several months since I came back to the city and since then, is questions about the hiring process. So we thought today's presentation, it would make a lot of sense to just walk through that in a real detailed and comprehensive way. We called it a day in the life, or how does a person become a Salt Lake City police officer? So if you can advance the slide, Amanda. Okay. So, so things, I believe, just to state, I guess, things that we know about the process for hiring police officers is that it's considerably more extensive, both in terms of steps and process and what's involved in how it's done. And it's also more labor-intensive. It's also much more time-consuming. One thing that folks sometimes don't know is that the hiring process is actually a partnership between HR and the Salt Lake City Police Department and POST, both in terms of its certification and requirements for police officers and, and how that translates also into training down the and requirements for police officers and and how that translates also into training down the way. Um the process involves considerably more testing components than um maybe a typical recruitment. So to give you a sense of that, in a typical recruitment, one that maybe we're most familiar with is someone will apply for a job. Sometimes they're asked to submit a written, a written sample of their writing, for example. They'll have an interview, sometimes they'll have two, and typically then they might be offered a job. So so kind of just speaking very generally, the recruitment process for other areas in the city is typically going to involve five to six separate components. In the police department, that the number of components is twelve. So there are twelve separate processes, and I'm going to talk about all of those. Um for the sake of the time we had today, and also just to set the foundation for what we're going to talk about in the future, we're going to talk today, we're going to focus today primarily on just the recruitment part of it. When we come back another day to talk about training and promotions, we're happy to talk more about that. One of the things you'll notice as we move through this is that the Salt Lake, the Salt Lake City's Police Department process involves a number of third party, um third party entities that we contract with to do assessments, to do all kinds of um background checks, to do psychological evaluations and all of that sort of stuff. As a, as it also happens, it's a, it's a collaborative effort, as I mentioned, between H R staff and police department staff. Just as a a way to frame this discussion, we've been looking at the recruitment process for the last couple of of months. For those of you who aren't familiar with how H R has been structured in the past, in the last couple of months, um the Salt Lake City Police Department has, for the first time in several years, been assigned a full time business partner. And a full time business partner's primary job is to help the department solve problems, to look at things, to look at processes and to evaluate what needs to change, what needs to be approved. So that's the framework that we want to talk about this in, is that all of, we, I'm I'm not certain we've identified every single aspect of it that we we're, we may look at, you know, in the course of the next few months. But what we are doing is looking at everything with a mind towards continuous improvement. So that's one of the kind of key framing um concepts that I wanted you to be aware of. If we can advance the slide. So.
Care if I jump in real quick, Deb? I just, I just want to say, council, I I just want to give the, you assigning uh an H R liaison over here has been uh it has been uh one of the best moves we've done in the last year. So I just want to thank you because it just helps facilitate all the the different things we're trying to do. So that's a big, a big move. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Um and you know, everybody, anybody, jump in anytime we have questions, just stop me. I'm happy to. Sometimes it's easier to answer the questions when we're at one point in the presentation as opposed to going forward. So please just wave or, I don't know, whatever we do, right, nowadays to say, hey, I have something to talk about. So the first piece of any sort of recruitment process, including, well, any sort of recruitment process, but particularly the process for Salt Lake City Police Officers, is to find candidates that represent our community. Our objectives are to attract diversity, facilitate inclusion, as I've mentioned in the slide. This, the process itself is designed to absolutely showcase equal opportunity. So as Ben mentioned, in December, we eliminated the Civil Service Commission. But the concepts that were behind what the Civil Service Commission was originally intended to be all about, and what it stood for was to make what had been a hundred years ago a very subjective process and try to make it more objective. And to ensure that anyone who wanted to participate in it did so from a position of equal footing. That is our, every single day, that is H R's. That's what we get up for. That's what we come to work for. Everything that we do is about trying to make sure and ensure equity and equal opportunity as much as we possibly can. So in terms of what does that look like? Outreach. So Salt Lake City reaches out to, um I don't know, more than twenty what you would think of as large platform recruitment entities. So what is, what do I mean by that? I mean, things like uh Indeed, LinkedIn, Glassdoor. There's one that we use called Direct Employers that goes to over a thousand entities nationwide. We utilize all of those. Um we utilize D W S. We use an app called Handshake. We utilize the Utah Cities of Towns, uh Utah League of Cities and Towns, um social media, LinkedIn posts, lots and lots of those. We also make, we also make note of it in our H R newsletter, which, as you all probably know, is published every couple of weeks. One of the ways that we've talked recently about about our outreach is in the last few years, that outreach has become more, as you could tell from the platforms that we're talking about, it's become very large. One of the things that we used to do that we'd like to get back to is finding ways to reach out to individual community entities. And some of that has been done, that we we believe some of that could be done um more extensively. That's one of the, one of the things that we're working to change. Um Chief, I'm going to let you talk about the community meetings, mentoring and internship.
Thanks, Deb. Counsel, I, on the outreach, I just want you to know that that is some of our, uh the best work we do within our community. I mean, we go to recruitment events, but I mean, colleges, high school, we even go down into the junior high sometimes to talk to to the youth of our city. The events, as they come seasonally, we're getting ready to do, to work with the Pacific Island Heritage Event, uh, community events, a- and I will say that Pride, Pride, when I was talking to the recruitment team today and the outreach team, we have the most engagement and uh people asking us for information at Pride every year. That's one of our best uh events to to go and and do outreach to, so. We do a social media campaign, uh so there's, we do everything we can, but we really like to work within our community. And and what Deb's talking about is community meetings. I think we're going to try push, to push a little harder to to have impact and to have uh, to make announcements within our community councils to talk about that we're recruiting and have that message go out kind of as a grassroots efforts. Mentoring, we've tried mentoring programs over the year. Our process has been lengthy, uh to say the least, sometimes it's five, six, seven months from start to finish. And in that time, people lose interest or they don't know where they're in in the process. And so we're going to try to assign mentoring in in this process, and as Deb and and her team are helping us, uh we would like to shorten that timeframe and uh increase the mentoring or the outreach or inclusiveness to to those that are seeking to be a part of our department. And then internships, we really can't have internships here at the P D, but I'll tell you what we do have. We have an explorer program, and that's the youth of our community, ages fourteen to twenty. And just to give you an example of the representation of the communities that we serve, we have forty nine total explorers right now, twenty four are male, twenty five are female. It's all, there's always more females and explorers than males, and I, and that's a good thing. That's a great thing. Fifty one percent right now are female. As far as diversity, we have twenty Hispanic explorers. We have one Asian, three African American, twenty one Caucasian, Hawaiian Pacific Islanders. We have one in multiracial. We have three. So the diversity in this explorer program is at fifty seven percent. But that is our internship. Those are the, that's the youth of our community coming to spend time with us, training to do service projects, to do work within our community. And we're starting to see that bear out into the classes that we hire. The last class that we hired contained three of our own homegrown explorers. One was Recruit Palata, Hispanic Shire. She was born in Kenya and then was as a refugee taken Somalia and then brought here. And then Habib is from Pakistan. So we're starting to see a lot of uh those uh our youth explorers making the leap into our organization. The last class that we hired, ten of the twenty six recruits were from diverse backgrounds. So a lot of good work is happening in that arena to bring the communities we serve into our department. Deb, back to you.
Thanks. So as Chief mentions, one of the ways you measure your outreach efforts is to see it, to see if you're attracting the sort of candidates you're looking for. In the last class that the P D hired, the um the folks who came from diverse backgrounds met or exceeded what you would typically tend to see for our community and the area for which we recruit. So the demographics for the area in which we recruit. Um, one other thing that I wanted to mention, sorry, nobody had a question. So one of the things I also wanted to mention is that in the last, even in the last year or so, when we open the, we do what's called continuous recruitment. I wanted to take a minute and talk about that. Continuous recruitment means we're always actively asking for applications. And sometimes that process can be short, three months, sometimes that process can be long. But basically, any person who finds out that they, that Salt Lake City, you know, hasn't a continuous recruitment can go at any time and apply to be a candidate for, for one of our positions. In the last couple of classes, we've had between seven to nine hundred people apply to, apply to be part of that process. And as they go through the process, some folks drop out and that type of thing. But um even with the challenges that we've seen in law enforcement last year, year and a half, we are still seeing seven hundred, nine hundred individuals who wanted Salt Lake City Police Officers. So I think that's worth sharing. Next slide, please. So, well, and all of the information that we're going to reference here is available. We're happy to share it. I can send it to Ben if the council, council members would like to see that. But the next kind of step in the process is evaluating and qualifying folks to be a Salt Lake City Police Officer. To meet those qualifications, they need to meet both Salt Lake City job minimums and significantly, the legal standards that are set by post. So one of the things we'll do job announcements is we communicate very clearly what those job requirements are. I'm happy to talk about those, um if if you'd like. And we talk about, in the job announcement, we talk about what the timeframe looks like, what the testing will be, what components of testing will be, will be involved, how to talk to folks if you need a special something or other, which I'm going to talk about in a minute, in order to be a part of the test. So one of the things that comes up pretty frequently for H R, for H R, is individuals who want to take, who want to be part of the process, and they have questions about accessibility. So questions tend to come in around citizenship, which is um a legal requirement under post standards. We also receive questions about language or physical things. One very common one is, is part of the physical testing. I can say more about this in a minute. As part of the physical testing for the job, we'll receive um requests from individuals who say, hey, I really can't run, but I can do water, whatever. I can do an equivalent. And we'll work with them pursuant to the city's obligation under the, to help make that happen. One of the things that the chief was mentioning to me was they had also worked with Post to make changes to how some of the post chain, the post tests were done. Chief, I'm going to let you talk about that.
Yeah, one of the, one of the tests and and one of the, is an in post test, and it was a competency test that Post required. They only gave it so often, and what we, and it was, it, several years ago, it used to be ranked when when we would use it as far as this hiring process. But we, we shortly, after, what we found is that in talking to some of our refugee community members, that they, the, I had refugee uh individuals come up and say, hey, Chief, I have two bachelor degrees from the University of Utah, but I can't pass the N T, the M post. Well, English isn't my first language, and so I try very carefully to read the questions and make sure I answer them right. And so in hearing that that was a block for some of our community members, some of our refugee community members, those that don't speak English as a first language, we contacted Post, and after talking back and forth, it was decided that uh we really didn't need to use the in post as a, as a prerequisite to to hiring. And we could do our own testing and do it the way we need or want to. Another one was, some of, sometimes we would set a date, Saturday at ten o'clock, you need to be here to do a P T test. If you can't make it, I'm sorry, you're out of the process. But now we're looking at, we will schedule these over the course of, you know, five, six, seven different weeks. So if you can't make it, or if you're working, our team will be out there to help you. If you don't pass the first time, guess what? We'll help you. We'll talk to you. We'll give you some techniques and some training tips so that maybe you can come back and do that. And in talking with the recruitment team today, again, they said, look, we, we had a young woman who who missed the run just by a very short length, and we, we, we let her do it the very same day. She came back and passed. So at every opportunity, we try to to make accommodations for everybody to 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 be part of this process. One of the, one of the uh processes was uh an assessment where you have to listen to a scenario on the screen. One, one of the individuals had a problem with the noise in the room, so we, we took them out and we gave them their own, their own hearing with uh with somebody to review it. So I I just want you to know, as as a P D, we're trying and working with H R to to be, to make this process accessible to every, every member of our community.
Okay, so next slide, please. As the, as the chief said, the, the next part of the process will be the beginning of a testing, the testing process. And as I mentioned, and we've, I've delineated them in the, in the slides, this is an extensive process. So I broke it up into three phases, just to, for kind of grouping somewhat similar things together. And the, the testing process is where we really learn about a candidate. That's true for any recruitment. It's especially true for a police officer, a candidate for police officer. Um, one of the questions that we had heard about was, was what did we, how did, how did we respond to the notion, the managerial notion that you can train an individual to do a particular function, but you can't train for character? And I believe in that absolutely. We can teach folks how to be Salt Lake City Police Officers. What we're looking for, the testing process, ways and methods and tests which evaluate their character, their ability to respond to situations, their, their ability to learn, their ability to understand concepts, and all of those things get to that. So with, with that in mind, um the first, as the chief mentioned, really typically, the first start, the first, the testing process really starts with phase one, which is a physical testing. And you might ask yourselves, what does physical testing involve? So it involves doing planks, which would eliminate me right off the bat, running a mile, a vertical jump, a pushups. And just, and I'm, I'm sure you would know, council members, that the reasons for a physical test have to have, any sort of physical test have to have a nexus to the person's ability to do their job or a job duty. And that, that is, of course, why they test for physical, for physical testing. The next step of the process, and and often, as he, as the chief mentioned, these are done on, on the same day to help people reduce travel if they need to. So we, we have folks who test for a police officer who travel in from out of state. So sometimes they really want to kind of do it all while they're here. And the written test that they take next is a um, a test that has been developed um by a company called Ergo Metrics. It's called a frontline national video test. It is used extensively nationally to um for law enforcement personnel. And the test um talks about things like human relations and situational judgment. But uh there's a component to factually or logically report situational events and a component that measures a candidate's comprehension and and retention competencies. This is part of what, this is one of the parts of the um, the scoring that each applicant will receive. So this, this written test is fifty percent of the scoring. The way it works is we administer it, and then we send it to economics who, and they complete the, they do the analysis, they do the evaluation, and then they send us back um the written results. Once, once that piece is done, then what we will do is apply what's called a preference. And I'm going to say a word about a preference. We've heard, we all know, um in hiring, in recruitment, there are there are individuals for whom we will get what's called a preference. And in this process, what that, what that is a little different in different processes. But in law enforcement, and I'm familiar with the way three or four different law enforcement entities do this, what that means is these individuals who come from our Explorer program or, or individuals who are veterans will receive extra points because they are veterans. Let's go to the next slide. Okay, so phase two. Again, what we're, what we're trying to do with each of these is, is assess a person's character, determine if they can be a good fit for our culture. And basically, these tests also move to or serve to identify situations. This test and the psychological testing serve to identify candidates who might have bias or extremism. So those, that, that they're specifically designed to do that. Phase two, we will initiate two things, kind of at, at phase two. And the first is we will help applicants understand how to go to the Utah post site, fill out an application and a background check. And then additionally, we administer an internal test identified on the screen as the Miller Mendel. The, the tool is the ESOP Background Check. I'll say a little about the ESOP Background Check, and the chief's going to say a little about kind of how our internal background checks match the post one and some of the processes that they go through internally to, to complete background checks. So the, the ESOP Background Check is a tool that's used to, it's a lot, this, this particular company works extensively with cities, counties, and state and federal governments, so it's very much a public sector organization. Fundamentally, what they do is a deep dive into all aspects of a person's background. This is a, this is a background check that takes the applicant twenty hours, about twenty hours to complete. On their website, Miller Mendel talks about, their, their website says they are a minority-owned small business focused on diversity and exclusion. And as I understand it, we've been using them for about the last three years. And I'll let the chief talk a little about some of the internal and post-related background checks.
Thanks, Deb. The post, the post, post is going to do their own background check. And, and it's quite extensive. They're very similar. They kind of review the same information. But post is a certifying agency for the, for the state. And so they, they, they do their own background investigation, and they have quite a lengthy questionnaire, like, like Deb was talking about. Our ESOP background is a little different. I mean, it does, it does go into depth and it, there's a lot of information that they have to fill out. And we, we try to help our candidates make sure they answer those questions appropriately and they understand what they're, what they're answering. And then with that information, it's assigned to our background check, background unit. And that, that consists of a sergeant and two background investigators. So we'll go through and review all that information, review those questionnaires. They'll start checking the different references and talking with people. And then after a three to four week period of gathering that information, they'll bring them in and do an internal interview with the background investigator. Another phase at this point is an interview from within the department. And we, we have the candidates come in and talk to a panel of three, three officers from within the department or three, three individuals. We do, we have now civilians that sit on those, those interviews. But we're trying very hard to make that panel to increase the diversity. So when, when people come in, they see a diverse group of officers or civilians to ask them questions and, and kind of, kind of find out more about them and why they want to be a Salt Lake City police officer.
So, no, just to follow up on what, closing little remark about the background checks. In every law enforcement organization that I have been associated with, one of the challenges about this whole process is finishing the background checks in a, in an expedited way. And you might say to yourself, okay, why is that important? And the reason it's important is because the faster we can identify and identify candidate, identify qualified candidates who are going to meet the standards that we're talking about in these background checks, the faster we can offer them the job, the better. So one of the things that we have started working with PD on is finding ways to make that background process just a little bit faster, as the chief mentioned. And then, as you mentioned, the next step in the process is the oral interview. Some of the questions that individuals are asked are things like, tell us about a time when you had to deal with something you were unprepared for, or tell us about a time when you were asked to set your integrity aside. So this is, that gives you a sense of those types of questions. That's obviously just a couple of examples. And then the next step in it is, is what we're calling, I call truthfulness verification. This is done utilizing two separate kind of approaches. Let's call it that. One is voice stress analysis and the other is eye detect. And I'm going to let the chief, I know a little bit. So eye detect, for those of you who aren't familiar with it, is a mechanism that's been court validated that measures a respondent's responses, I guess, when asked particular questions. And it does so by, by looking at what happens with the individual's eyes and measuring that. We could say, we could be here for an hour and talk about that. But chief, can you tell them a little more about the voice stress analysis?
Yeah, David, it's, it's very much like the, the eye detect. Your voice under certain questions will change in pitch and response. Your vocal cords change and, and when you're under stress. So that's another way to, to measure whether people are telling you the truth or to, to, to understand, maybe vet out different issues or problems that they haven't disclosed in the ESOP or the other background. What we're leaning towards is the eye detect. It's a thirty-minute test. You only ask the questions one time, you measure the response, and then you can get a five-minute result. And the nice thing about that is you can have a result, you can give somebody a passing score and have them move on to the next portion of testing, rather than have them wait for a week or two weeks, because every week is critical. Everybody's trying to, to, to find those blue chip candidates to, to hire into their police departments and jails. And time is not your friend in this recruitment process. So we're, this next process, we're going to go to the eye detect procedure. We have been doing the CVSA or the voice stress analysis for the last couple of years, but we're going to move to this new technology.
Okay. Can we go to the next slide, please? Okay, phase three, again, with the same objectives to identify bias or assess organizational fit. With the next step of the process involves basically finalizing those comprehensive background checks. And as you can, as you can tell from what the chief's saying, there's a lot of moving parts because there's the post piece, there's the piece that they're doing and all of that. And then the next, the next series of tests involves psychological tests. And then the city administers four. And I'm going to tell you the names. I'm prepared to give you a little summary, but I certainly am not a assessment expert about, you know, how these relate to, I don't know, how these, how these are measured and how they're, how they're verified. But I could tell you kind of what, what I know. And that is that these are independently administered, they are independently verified, they're independently, they're independently assessed. And there's, the four components are, I'll just read, read them to you. The WPT, which is a Wonderlic Assessment Exam, a Shipley Two Composite A Vocabulary, a Shipley Two Abstraction, Composite Abstraction, and then a Minnesota Multifasic Personality Inventory, which is referred to as an MMPI dash two. So let me go back through those and guess, yes, what they talk about. The Wonderlic Assessment Exam is a very common exam used in employment, both in the public sector and elsewhere, actually. It measures general knowledge, abstract reasoning, verbal reasoning. It, it measures a candidate's ability to solve math questions or follow directions or arrange sentences or understand analogies. So that's kind of a sense of that. I'm sure, as you know, as I mentioned, there's a lot more we could say about that. The second one is the, the Shipley Two Composite A Vocabulary. And this is a test that's been around for quite a long time. It has been re-standardized in the last, looks like in the last ten years. It's, it measures what they refer to as crystallized and fluid intelligence. Again, I'm happy to provide more information about that. But basically, what this is well suited for is for, for the type of environment we're using it for and also for human resource applications. And the abstraction one kind of measures some of the same things. The Minnesota Multifasic Personality Inventory is a psychological test that assesses personality traits in psychopathy. So it's, it's a long test. It has about three hundred and thirty questions. It's been recently updated and nationally, it's used nationally, like I mentioned, all of these tests are. And what this test does is it measures categories of abnormal thinking or behavior or assesses them. That might be a better way to say it, because probably if the folks who did this exam were listening to me talk about it, they would say I was leaving all kinds of stuff out, important stuff. But what this, what this test measures is things like depression or paranoia or obsessions or depersonalization or things like that. So how are they, how are these tests administered? You can, the tests are administered through an entity we contract with. What will happen is the candidate will come in to take the test. The test is done electronically. And the results are sent to the organization we contract with, Comprehensive Psychological Services, and they evaluate the test results, which then leads us to the last part of this particular phase. And that is the, the candidate will have an interview with a psychologist who has access to all of the, the results of all these tests and will go through it all with them. Now, one of the things that the psychologist is mindful about is that different people answer questions different ways. So they're looking for ways to ensure that a candidate has had an opportunity to express themselves or talk about what, what, what the tests, the tests have asked him about, if that makes sense. Anything on that?
Yeah, I just want to point out, counsel, counsel, that, you know, that, that last identifying biases or extremism. That's a big topic right now in law enforcement. Madam Chair, we were on a, on a, on a WebEx a month or so ago where that, that's a big thing. People want to know if you have people in your organization that are expressing biases or extremism. And what we do is through the questionnaire of the ESOP, there are questions to talk about that, self-disclosure questions. We also ask those questions under truth verification, so we can measure if they're being truthful to those type of questions. The psychological evaluation, I know there are questions in there that, like, like Deb just talked about, where the psychologist will review that. We also, in references, we find when we go out to talk to references, people are very candid with us. And they, they at times will say, hey, could be a good officer, but you may want to watch how they interact with, you know, X or Y or Z. And then we ask questions in the interview, and then we do go and look at social media. We look at their social media to see what they post. And so we do an extensive look into that, and we do our very best because that is the last thing we want, is to have anybody with those type of views or biases or extremism issues in our department. So we're trying very hard to root that out. And if there's any, if there's ever a hint, if something comes back from, from the psychologist, we will, we will just dismiss somebody and not take a chance. It's just not worth it, and it's not what we want here, wearing our patch and badge as police officers serving our community. So I want you to know that, where we take that very serious.
And just to kind of wrap up this slide, as I mentioned, the psychologist will also ask questions designed to elicit a candidate's responses related to personal bias or cultural bias. I didn't, I didn't use this word correctly. Can we go to the next slide, please? So one of the questions we've also received a lot of is, how does this process apply for lateral applicants? Because as you know, I believe all of you know that, well, certainly prior to the COVID, the last year and the COVID pandemic, recruitment was very hard for law enforcement, very, very hard. And it wasn't just hard here in Salt Lake City, it was hard all through, all through Utah. So many organizations, including the organization from which I came, would from time to time make the decision to hire a lateral applicant. One of the questions we've had is, what's the process look like for them? So, here, here it is. The process is basically the same for a lateral applicant, except with a couple of small differences. First of all, there's a different written test that Latin, that lateral applicants receive. Instead, they do a, the written test that they do is slightly different than what a new recruit might do. It's a scenario-based written report. There's in physical testing, because these are individuals who are coming from a law enforcement background. And these are also applicants who are already post-certified. So the step about becoming post-certified isn't, isn't something that a lateral applicant will have to do. Chief, you want to say anymore about that?
Yeah, we, counsel, we haven't done a lateral class for quite some time. And as we go forward, we want to make sure if we do a lateral process, because many times they're already post-certified, they've entered the background check to post. We bring them to our department, we, we, we put them to an abbreviated academy to teach them, you know, city policies, the way that we do things, and then we, we put them into an FTO program. But the question that always comes up is, how do you make sure that these candidates embrace the culture and embrace the way we want these officers to serve and represent our, you know, our department and serve in our community? And so we're going to, to look at maybe extending the FTO program for laterals, some way to make sure that we're getting the very best. If somebody wants to come join our ranks from another organization, we want to make sure that they are up to the standards that we expect and most importantly, that our community expects.
Chief, you mentioned that you haven't done a lateral class for a while. And I believe that Deb mentioned that we just started doing the, is it the ASOP testing about three years ago? Would you consider, and that that's sort of a little bit more directed at determining the, or identifying bias and extremism? Is that and the eye detect test something that you would consider in the lateral recruitment process or the lateral hiring process, rather? To, to get at what you just said, right, of making sure that they fit the values of Salt Lake City?
So just to be super clear, the lateral, the lateral testing process includes the, includes all of those things that we talked about for the others. So it, it includes those with these, just with these exceptions. So we don't do another PT, we have them do a different written test. They don't have to be post-certified. But the process involves every other component that we've walked through for the other, the other, for new recruits.
Okay, I apologize. I misunderstood that.
Totally, no, it's totally cool.
Just real quick, Madam Chair, to your, to your question, we also go look at their internal affairs file from the agency they came from. We want to make sure that we're not taking on somebody else's problem here. So we look completely, and we look holistically at everything out there. So, but those are good questions. Thank you.
Next slide, please. Okay, so now we're to the hiring process. And of course, our objective is to bring the very best. And of course, our objective is to bring the very best candidates we can into our organization. The process next involves a chief's interview. And the the chief mentioned how, what he, you know, what he talks to candidates about. I'm going to walk through this and then I'm going to let him come back and tell you just a little bit more about how he conducts those interviews. But so the next step in the process is the chief's interview. As you all know, based on what we told you in December, I guess it was, we have new rules regarding recruitment. Those rules, one of the primary advantages, there's many, but one of the primary advantages is that the rules, the new rules, oh, I should say this part, the new rules for PD went into effect for the police department on, what month are we in, February 22nd? And that was largely so we could start working on some recruitments that PD needs to do. Those rules are in place, done and after. And one of the primary advantages of the rules is that it allows the chief to interview many, many more similarly ranked individuals. So rather than just interviewing a set number for each vacancy, he has, he or his designee, it can be either can interview more folks. And that's a, that's a really big advantage. Finally, then the next, the first step is a conditional offer letter, which makes an offer of employment. And it's continued conditional on the completion of a medical exam and a drug screen. So Chief, I'm going to go back to you and let you talk about how, what some of the questions you ask your candidates in an interview are.
Yeah, thank you. Those, that that last interview is kind of a culmination of everything. It's it's a lot of time, it's a lot of effort on everybody's part. But it really is an opportunity for for me or or the other chiefs to sit down and have a good conversation. And if there are any issues or concerns that have been highlighted, we will ask those questions. We'll, we'll, we'll ask for for an explanation or whatever it might be for the candidate to address. And if it doesn't meet our expectations, then they will, they will not be hired. It also gives the candidates an opportunity to ask us questions to see if this organization is really what they want to be a part of, because this is really a contract. It's it's a contract between the citizens of Salt Lake City and and these these to be officers. In fact, it's to the point where we hold, and I'll send this over to Ben or Allison, but this is a contract. We have them read and sign, and it basically goes through our core values, our vision statement, our mission statement. But they have to check three boxes and then sign their name to it. And they answer, they say, I have received a copy of the core values for the Salt Lake City Police Department. I am committed to studying and adopt these values and I will dedicate my life to these values as a Salt Lake City police officer. They they check those boxes, they sign and date it and it goes in their file. And if we have ever have issue or problems, we pull that, we talk about it. Well, one of the questions that we asked to this last class was, you know, with everything that happened in 2020, it really wasn't the year of the cop. I'll say that. It was, it was a tough year. It was a very tough year. And the question I asked was, why now? Why Salt Lake City? And these young people really surprised me. They 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 came back and said, you know, I could sit on the couch and I can, I can be mad and I can be angry and I can hate the system or I can hate what's going on or I can get off the couch and I can get involved and I can do something to change, to change what's going on. And I was really impressed when asking that question, the responses they had, because they really are doing it for the right reason at the right time. So, but leave it to say, they're they're very good interviews where we really just talk about if this is really the fit for them.
Okay, next slide, please. So once individual is hired, they are yay, successful Salt Lake City police officer. And having successfully completed this process, then a new hire, a lateral or recruit, recruit, the laterals will be slightly different, of course, but a new hire will begin a 10-month training process. So that the for, and Chief, maybe you can differentiate these two for the council. But a new recruit will come in and do 22 weeks to do their post-certification and then 18 weeks of field training assessment. She, the, what do latter, the laterals do the second, but they are, they're already post-certified, so they don't really need to do the first, right?
Right. And that and that's what we were talking about is it sometimes is a three to four week in-house academy where we we introduce them to Salt Lake City policies, the way we do things, kind of our expectations. And then an abbreviated FTO program for maybe four to six weeks. But there's talk about maybe extending that a little bit more. But that 22 weeks is really what post requires us to do. That's quite a long time. And then 18 weeks to be assessed by a field training officer. That's where every day you sit in the car with another officer and you're evaluated on 40, 50 different points of critique and to see where you're deficient, where your strengths are. And you apply that to to them and they they get to learn every day. So that's 40 weeks, that's 10 months. If you put a dollar to that, we invest in our recruits well over $150,000 before they ever hit the street. That's why this process is so important. We can't afford to dismiss people, you know, just willy-nilly. That's a lot of money and time. Do we? Yes, we do. There, there are some people that get into the academy and basically after doing it, they'll basically say, this is not for me. Or if if they're struggling, sometimes we we ask and we tap them out. But we tried to hire the very best, to train them to the highest level of expectations and then have them serve this community for many, many years.
Okay. Next slide. Questions?
Council members? James?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I guess my question for the chief, how, are you already implementing these changes that you're looking at? Or how long are you looking, it will take for you to get all of them implemented in the hiring?
Uh, council member, we are, we are doing all the things we're talking about. We're now working with HR to maybe rearrange the order and to start some of the processes at the same time, so that we can shorten that window from six months down to five months, maybe down to four months. But we don't want to ever leave out any of those important steps. We're looking at ways that we can speed that process up.
Councilmember Rogers, all of this stuff in the presentation are things that we are already doing. Where, as I mentioned at the start of the conversation, we are looking at each step of the process with an eye toward really continuous improvement. How do we make it faster? Like the chief said, how do we make it more robust? What kind of outreach can we do to make sure we're involving more of our community, those types of things? But each of the steps are are what the actual process looks like right now.
Darren?
Um, yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. So um, so those are all things that we've been doing. Chief Brown, you mentioned that the most recent recruit class had 10 people from diverse backgrounds out of 26. And I think I remember from a couple of months ago, you said three out of 30. Can you help me reconcile those numbers? Are there two different recruit classes that have been hired recently?
No, Councilmember Ramona, we were, we were in a higher 30. At the very last, we lost two or three to different, for different reasons. We actually were able to to hire 26. Of those 26, 10, I think we were talking 10 of 30 and now it's 10 of 26. So.
Oh, I guess I just remembered the wrong number before, because I remembered three. So the, you talked about the recruitment and how you go to festivals and you go to different community events and things. But how, can you maybe guess as to why it hasn't resulted in a more representative police department matching the demographics of Salt Lake City in the past and what might be done differently in order to hopefully get that, get closer?
You, council member, you broke up just a little bit on the front end. I think you were asking, we go to fairs and different events. Why, why don't the demographics match up? Is that what your question?
Yeah, that's basically the question. Thanks.
Okay. I I wish I had the answer to that. That's the million dollar question. I don't know. But that's exactly what we're talking about and that's this partnership that we're working with HR. We're going to do it better. We're going to do it bigger. We're going to try to, to, once an individual expresses interest, we're going to try to help them through the process, accommodate them at every level and engage them because we we typically, over that long process, we lose people. There are other, there are people that will say, hey, I already took a job here or I'm not any, I'm not interested in that anymore. If we find those blue chip recruit candidates, we want them within this organization. So I I wish I had one answer to say that would be the big red easy button to push and say, that's how we're going to do it. But we're going to do it at a lot of different levels and ways to engage people.
Just to add, council member, as you know, we're interested in working with the Committee on Racial Equity and Policing. We've been tracking the demographics of our of our applicants for a number of years. And could probably maybe in one of our next conversations, give you a breakdown of what the demographics look like. If you'd be interested in that.
Thank you. I think that would be great. Chris?
Yeah, thank you. I'm just curious about, we went through all of this presentation and I'm just wondering, and you probably mentioned this as we were going through it, but I don't think I got like a list. What are the the tests and or other parts of the process that are unique to Salt Lake City as a, I mean, obviously, our value statement that you have the officer sign is different. And I'm sure that our questions are different, but are there any tests? Or is there, is our procedure fundamentally different than other police departments in in Utah?
Yes, council member, I can speak to that from, from, as I mentioned, my prior employment. Salt Lake City employs, the psychological testing that Salt Lake City employs isn't something that is always done by other agencies. They also don't necessarily have that same the written test that I mentioned at the beginning that talks about all the, all the different components, that the situational awareness and human relations and that sort of stuff, that is an attest that other law enforcement agencies, in my experience, have administered. So there's two right, right off the bat. I'm trying to think what others that would be, you know, any, any law enforcement agency in the state of Utah is going to work with post in terms of post background and that. Background, the the internal background work that Salt Lake City does is is something that's also done by other law enforcement agencies, but I believe it's a little more thorough. Historically, it was always a little more thorough here. So there's some, there's some things about it that are different, things that we do here that aren't necessarily done at other places.
Okay. Could I possibly get like an email, like just outlining the things that are different about our process? That, okay.
Sure. As it happens, I, as you probably could tell, I did a doc, a talking points document. And I'm happy to show that, happy to show that with Ben or all of you, however, whatever. We can add that in that, that yes, other law enforcement agencies don't necessarily do these same sorts of things.
That would be, that would be great if you could just pass it on to Ben and Ben can distribute it to council members for us.
Happy to, happy to. I'll put links into the tests too. Because they're, you know, they're going to do, they're going to be more able to describe their tests and all the wonderful things about them than, you know, than I am. So that that would probably be something that would be helpful for you.
Thank you so much. Dan, did you have questions?
Yes, thank you for that presentation. And I would also like to see, what did we do different, what have we done differently from 2019? So over this past year, if you look back at 2019, did we have different tests? Did we have different requirements? And what is, what has changed over this past year in the hiring process? Maybe I missed that.
No, the process that we described has, most of it been in place since before. So I, as you, I'm sure you remember, council member, been back with the city, I think it's like six months and eight days or something like that. So I'm not, I'm not entirely sure what the process would have looked like in 2019. What I do know is that the tests and the protocol that we've talked about have been in place for several years. So in many respects, the the processes we've described are really very much the same. What's new is that in the time I've been back and then in the time since we've hired a full-time support business partner for the police department, Jessica Weaver, what we have started to do is look at how to make the processes better. For example, the piece I talked about with outreach. For the last several years, the city has been doing these larger platform outreach things. And of course, one of the things that we we think might be very beneficial for the department and the community is to find a way to target those multi-community based organizations. But a lot of those things have been in place for quite a while. Chief, can you, can you say more about that?
Yeah, you know, Councilmember Dugan, that's a great question. I think, and you met him a few weeks ago in council meeting, you know Sergeant Mason Givens, who was the sergeant that was over the hostage negotiation team when Jessica Weaver and they worked together to to get that, that individual to surrender without any issues. He's over the background and he's, he's had that now for a couple of years, but he comes with a different mindset. He's, he's very much, he wants to keep the bar high. He realizes that his unit is kind of the gatekeeper. We need the very best to come in here, but he also takes a very inclusive look at how we do things. You know, if if somebody can't meet that deadline of a PT test or a written test, he's trying to be as accommodating as as he possibly can. He's not looking for ways to wash people out. He's, he's looking for ways to be inclusive and bring people along. And so I think a lot of it is a mindset like, like Deb talked about. We're doing the same things that we've done for several years, but under his direction. And now working with Deb and Jessica Weaver, who's assigned over here as our liaison. I think we really have a good team to find and to bring the very best candidates to our department in a short time.
And the reason I'm asking, because you know, 2020 was a tumultuous year. And what lessons learned did we take from all the, all the protesting and the biases and the inclusion and and moving forward and and looking at our recruits in that way?
Great. Thank you too. Darren?
I just wanted to say thanks, Dan, for that question. And I was, I was grateful when Deb Alexander, you said that you're hopeful that the R E P Commission can help you in some of these next steps moving forwards and changes. It sounds like we have a very robust system already, which is great. But I would love to see what specific changes we can make to to increase the diversity within our department. I would love that the R E P Commission were consulted in that.
Thank you. That is what we get up every single day to do. It really truly is, right?
Thank you, Deb. Councilmember, other questions?
Chief, I actually, and Deb, I actually have a question. One of the things that we've heard from the R E P Commission is not just the diversity that we need within the department itself and with our police officers, but how police officers are learning about and engaging in communities, communities of color or communities, maybe a different socioeconomic status or just different neighborhoods in general. For example, I think that we've heard about getting out and going and and learning the history of our unique communities and learning about Rose Park or, you know, the different, different aspects of Glendale or how things came to be or even, even parts of Sugar House or our refugee communities that we have. Are there plans, and this may come sort of more in the training part that we will be getting an update on, but are there plans within the department to take some of those steps?
Yes, Madam Chair, as we sit and we now have 10, 12, it might be 15 officers that are assigned to those different subcommittees of the Racial Equity Policing Commission. And they're hearing the very thing you you just spoke about. And they're hearing the very thing you just spoke about, the history of our city and the communities we serve. And so we're waiting for some recommendations, but I know that's a big, a big component of what they would like to instill, to have the community come in and talk to the new recruits or in, in the academies or in service training. That's a good thing. Bringing the communities together with the police officers they serve and understanding each other. That's a, that I know that's going to be a big recommendation and I know our officers would embrace that, you know? That, that's a good, that's a good thing for all of us and it's a good thing for Salt Lake City.
Great. Any other questions, comments, council members?
Madam Chair, sorry, I keep.
No, you're fine.
Chief Brown, I just wanted to say thank you for presenting to us. I know you mentioned that you didn't feel like 2020 was the year of policing. I actually think 2020, we focused a lot on improving the police department and I truly believe that those efforts are going to result in a better and better equipped police department. So I think maybe it was the year of policing.
Now, I say that tongue in cheek, but I agree with you. I agree. We're going to learn a lot about policing and guess what? We're going to change and we're going to be that police department. We're going to, we're still going to be a great police department. We're going to be even better and we're going to be the, the police department that our community deserves.
Thank you, Chief. If that's everything from the council members, I just want to say thank you to both Chief Brown and to Deb Alexander. It was really quite informational and I think that these discussions we're having with these kind of in-depth dives into different aspects really helped the conversation for us as council members, as we look at different policies or budgeting or things of that nature and for the, for the community as a whole. And so I really want to thank you for taking the time to be with us and to, to delve in and really provide a lot of that great information to us that I don't, I didn't know. So it's been, it's been really great. So thank you for that hard work. Appreciate you. And with that, council members, everyone gets a little bit of a break.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
So we have a break until about 4:15. That's only about 10 minutes, so everybody come back at 4:20. We have a full agenda today and running just a few minutes behind. So Agenda Item Number Six is the briefing on Budget Amendment Number Seven. And I am going to turn the time. I know that we have our Chief Financial Officer, Mary Beth, and the City Budget Director, John Bike, with us. But I will turn it over to council staff, Ben Ledkey, to kick us off.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the first briefing for Budget Amendment Number Seven. The total expenditures are almost $23 million, of which $6.5 million is proposed to come from fund balance. If the council approved the budget amendment as requested by the administration, the amount of fund balance above the 13% minimum target would be $6.7 million. There's a total of 46 items. We do not need to go through all of them today. Or ever. About half of them, we would typically discuss at a briefing. There are also three new positions that are proposed as part of the budget amendment. I'll highlight those when we get to those items. There are several items related to the Police Department. The mayor spoke to some of these earlier in the briefing. The Police Department items relate to unexpected events throughout the fiscal year and the costs associated with those, such as the special events, like the vice presidential debate, protests, the community commitment program, and costs of staffing during a pandemic, such as emergency leave and workers' compensation. We'll address each of those items later in the amendment. I'd like to start with a graphic that the council requested earlier this year to summarize on one page how the city is using federal funds this fiscal year. And this is intended to be a reference tool. And this is intended to be a reference tool as well as a communication tool for you and when communicating with members of the public. This will be added to the budget webpage as well as shared with the administration. If you can scroll down a little, Amanda, to the total amount. $113 million is what the city has received for the listed items from the federal government this year. The largest chunk of those is for the airport. They received $82 million via the Federal Aviation Administration. The general fund received three rounds of CARES Act funding as a pass-through from the county. The first and second round were the same amounts, $5.9 million. And then the city received $150,000 in the third round. The council will likely remember last month when you approved $7.1 million in CARES Act HUD grants, as well as coming up next Tuesday, the annual HUD grants, which was $5.5 million. And then the item we'll get to in this budget amendment is direct from the US Treasury, $6 million for rental assistance. So this is a running total, and it does not include funding the city is expected to receive, up to $87 million from the recently passed American Rescue Plan. But we wanted to take a minute to share this. It was emailed to you earlier this afternoon and let staff know if we can help get this to any of your constituents or in your email updates or newsletters. You can take it down, Amanda. Thanks. Uh, next up, if you can put page two of the staff report on the screen, Amanda. The administration is requesting a straw poll or early hire advertising of currently vacant positions that are proposed to change. Now, the administration can reclassify a job title or decrease the pay grade without council approval. The positions listed in the table on the screen are new positions which require council approval or they're increasing the pay grade for existing positions, which also require council approval. Each year, the council adopts an annual compensation plan with the annual budget. And this is for all of the nonrepresented employees in the city. So we have employees represented by the fire union, the police union, and ask me. And then about a third of the city's workforce is not represented by a union, and they are covered by the annual compensation plan. The changes in the table are to appointed employees. And appointed employees are part of the compensation plan because appointed employees are not represented by the unions. The first three positions were previously approved by the council for funding in previous budget openings. The airport COO, the deputy director of HR, and the chief innovations officer. These are housekeeping follow-ups for the council to approve these positions in the annual compensation plan. But you've already approved the funding for these positions. These positions exist, they're funded, but that last step still needs to be done to add them to the appointed pay plan. The second half of the table are new requests. These are new positions as well as changes to the current pay grade of those positions. Could you zoom in a little bit, Amanda? The first one is the deputy city attorney. And this is a request to increase the pay grade from 39 to 40. It's related to an internal restructuring that the attorney's office is going through. And all of the positions in the new request section, they're not requesting funding this fiscal year. The existing department budgets will absorb the cost from these changes. But it's important to know if the council approves these new requests, the fiscal year 22 budget will have added costs. The second position is a business development division director in economic development. It's a new role. Attachment three has the job description. The added cost next fiscal year would be an additional $37,000. The next position is replacing the census coordinator. The census count is done. The mayor's office is proposing to retain the position but increase the pay grade and reclassify it to a community outreach, equity, and special projects coordinator. The next two positions are in the police department. The mayor spoke to these in the updates from administration section. Both of the positions would be elevating the role of communications and internal affairs higher into the organization of the police department. They would have the same pay grade and be at the same level as the deputy chiefs. The director of communications is replacing the police public relations full-time employee. Attachment four has the job description. And the added cost next fiscal year would be $31,000. Attachment five has the job description for the director of internal affairs. And the added cost next fiscal year is $100,000. And particular to the director of internal affairs, instead of it being assigned to an existing police officer, it would be for a specific candidate with specialized skills in the disciplinary system and internal affairs investigations. So this is intended to professionalize that role. The last two items are in the 911 department. They're both pay grade changes to existing positions, increasing the pay grade for the director and the deputy director. This will bring them in line and have greater parity with the pay grades that department directors have in other areas of the city. If the council is comfortable, the administration would like a straw poll so they can start advertising the currently vacant positions early. But now would also be a great time if there are any questions or concerns. And the council could certainly vote on these separately or at a later time.
Council members?
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, so on the, um, uh, equity and special projects coordinator position, um, first of all, it says that, um, they're repurposed to meet constituent business operational needs. Is that supposed to be like constituent business and operational needs? Or is this just pertaining to like constituent businesses? Like, does it include? Um, is, I'm just trying to clarify, the focus of this office is not just on business constituents, but is on constituents?
I think there's like, I think there's a comma missing between constituent and business.
Okay. Okay. Um, and then, um, what happened to, do we still have the, um, office of diversity and human rights within the mayor's office? Do we still have that position? And is that, how does that relate to the equity officer?
I am not sure. Um, we might have someone from the mayor's office that could speak to that.
Hi, I'd be happy to talk to that, uh, council member, Wharton. So our goal with the chief equity officer position is to replace that former director's position and elevate the chief equity officer to a senior policy advisor level so that that person would report directly to the mayor. Um, there previously with that position, it had been beneath the senior policy advisor. And now those two positions would essentially be equal. So, um, this goes to our overall goal to elevate that office and then in turn, uh, the role of the Human Rights Commission and equity in the city as a whole.
So will this, um, new director position be the, the staff person for the Human Rights Commission as well?
Yes, that is our intention.
Or someone, you know, working under them or whatever? Okay. Um, okay.
Council members, other questions? And sorry, I got cold, so I had to put a hoodie on. I don't hear or see anyone.
Do we, Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Do we know the overall, so for all of these proposed positions, what would be the overall fiscal impact to the city?
I, I don't have the exact number in front of me. I believe it's around a quarter million, but we can follow up with finance and get a more precise number.
Madam Chair, is that, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Anna, just a quick follow-up. Is that what it would be at this point or ongoing? Or would that number be the same?
It would be ongoing, starting next fiscal year. This fiscal year, existing department budgets will absorb all of the cost uh, for the next three months.
Got it. Okay. Anna?
Yeah, on the, on the director of business development, um, I see the job description, the summary, and I just, what's the difference between the staff that we have, um, doing some work? That seems like they do some of this work versus this brand-new position? How is it different that what we're doing already?
I'd be happy to chime in and take that one, council member. Um, the position currently as it's structured within the department is both the deputy of the department as well as the business development director. Creates multiple challenges for the department because, one, there are oftentimes two different sets of needs to do those two different positions. As well, um, you know, the arts in our department and an equal focus on business development in the arts and elevating the arts within our economic strategy. Uh, you know, managing the day-to-day of business development activities as well as looking at the wider scope is a little bit difficult. And so it's one of those requests that we're making, to, you know, focus more on our grants, more on our policies and what we're doing there. And as it pertains to the arts, as opposed to, uh, managing the staff and day-to-day operations of business development. And the request as well, um, is to reposition the EDLF manager. There were several challenges with centralizing that position. So this request also seeks to move in the day-to-day loan operations into everyone's, uh, at the project manager level, everyone's day-to-day duties within the department, similar to how the RDA does their loan programs. And so, uh, it would be repurposing that position within the department, decentralizing that loan program and having, uh, that position pulled out from underneath the deputy in a standalone position.
Thanks, Ben. I'm a little confused. Sorry. So the EDLF person is, we won't have that anymore? Is, and then it's, this new person is going to do it?
The thought process, currently, we have a contract with NDC to manage the loan operations. And similar to how the loan program is run through the RDA, we will have our project managers in both business development and the arts be able to facilitate loan requests, uh, with the underwriting and the technical side from NDC to process loan requests. So it would be removing the centralized position, but having everybody in the department at the project manager level be able to bring loans before the EDLF committee.
Okay. Thanks.
Are there other questions, council members? Okay, I, as Ben mentioned, the administration is looking for a straw poll. So I will see if somebody has a straw poll.
Madam Chair. Uh, I will propose a straw poll that we support the administration's suggested new positions starting in fiscal year 2022. Did I say that right?
I think it would start now, as soon as they hire. And then we'd have a new, they'd have to incorporate these new positions, if they wanted to, into the proposed budget of 2022. Jen just had one, so we'll see if I'm right.
So potentially, they could hire the positions before the end of this fiscal year. That's why I was referencing about, they would absorb it at this fiscal year. And then, then, it's great, they would have to absorb it, figure out how to, propose that those positions be continued into fiscal year 2022. So the straw polls can, may advertise starting now, since the hiring process can sometimes take a few months.
Okay, I propose a straw poll that we, uh, give a green light to the administration to advertise for these positions.
Okay, I have a straw poll by council member Mono. Um, is, does anyone have any questions or discussion on the straw poll? Okay, I will look for thumbs up or thumbs down. From what I can see, everyone has a thumbs up, so that is unanimous. Ben, did you want to move on in our budget number seven amendment discussion?
If you're ready.
We're ready.
Mary Beth has a revenue update, uh, overall, as well as a sales tax revenue update. Uh, where would you prefer to start, Mary Beth? I couldn't hear you. I think you're muted.
You're right. I need to push a button. Let's do sales tax first.
Okay. Amanda, do you have the sales tax table? Excellent.
Um, so council members, you know that I have been waiting, um, on bated breath for the December numbers, which actually came at the end of February. And as you can see, the difference between, um, calendar year or fiscal year 2020 versus 2021, we have a percentage of change of a positive $137,000, which is fantastic because our budget was a lot less than that. We have, um, projected the remainder of the year with budget at this point, um, which would, if that comes, if that comes to fruition, will be about $3.8 million above budget. Um, but December is a key in, um, how the economy is doing. Um, as you can see in below, um, retail trade is, has got a huge increase. And accommodations and food obviously is, is a decrease. You know, hotel occupancy right now is about 30%. Um, so that is where the accommodation and food services, um, lie. But retail trail, trade, excuse me, um, that's, um, increased and it's a significant amount of our budget. Any questions?
Council members? I'm not going to question having more money than we thought we would get, so. But I did, I just, Darren, did you just raise your hand? No? Okay.
That's good.
I have a question. On the, uh, food services, I think the last time was also about, uh, minus 43 year-over-year, the last time we updated. Has that been pretty much steady across?
It has, on a month-to-month. It has. On a month to month, it's pretty much steady. We are hoping that, you know, as, as, you know, COVID starts to relax a little bit, that will increase. But both the accommodations and food services have, industry has hurt significantly with the pandemic.
And do we see these percentage changes holding steady through the next four months, five months?
Yeah, I would assume it will hold steady. I mean, there's, we always can be optimistic, but until we, I mean, I don't know. I mean, I hope that it, I hope that it, it is better, but I would be cautiously optimistic that it would turn out a little bit better than this.
And I'm gonna, sorry, one more question. Is that 3 million what we're projecting it to be at the end of the year or what it is currently as to the December numbers?
3 million, 3.8 is what we would project at the end of the fiscal year if we, if we brought in what is budgeted. So if we go above the 4.8, which is our budgeted number, then it will be higher than 3.8 million.
Okay, thank you.
And opposite, if we go below that, right, then it'll be less than 3.8 million.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, Mary Beth, I think you can keep going.
Okay, can we go to the revenue projections, Amanda? Thank you. There we go. So at the end of March, we will receive our property tax final settlement. So we will have property tax numbers or a good feel for property tax at that point in time. Sales tax, sales and use tax right now with this, we, is at zero. Obviously with the information I just provided you, this information is a little bit outdated because it came before I received the sales tax information. So the sales tax projections will change. And then the franchise taxes, this is mainly based on franchise taxes for utilities. That's the decrease and that's, you know, not as cold winters. That's, that's where that one sits. Licensing permits, this is, I'm doing really well, thanks to permits. Inkeepers tax obviously is significantly lower as well as the parking tax. Both of those are significantly lower. Parking tax consists of, you know, city owned properties, that includes the airport. Intergovernmental is low, interest income obviously is a slight decrease. That's based on interest right now. But the major areas, all of the other four areas are based on parking in downtown. So fines and forfeitures is mainly parking tickets, but also has traffic and misdemeanors in there. Parking meters obviously is parking meters. Charges and services, that is a special events decrease. Miscellaneous revenue is a portion of collections, which is parking tickets. And then also the waiver of the fuel reimbursement from Salt Lake City employees. So that totals a deficit of about 4.4 million. Which is, which is above, I believe, Amanda, or below, sorry, Amanda. Any questions on that?
Council members, questions? Okay, let's keep moving.
A quick impact fees update. The administration is nearing completion of updates to the fire and parks sections of the impact fee plan. So those will come to the council for consideration, review, and adoption. The police impact fees, $104,000 is scheduled to expire between now and October. And Amanda, you can put down the revenue chart. Thanks.
Ben? In the reports, in the staff report that I'm looking at, and maybe I'm not, I missed it somewhere as I looked through this, the impact fees update says only $16,000 is set to expire in March. But then, is there another, oh, I just reread it, do, to expire in October. Okay, so, but that 16,000, has it already expired? Is it going to expire?
I think it's multiple days. I don't think it all expires on the same day, but I'm not sure.
Councilmember Fowler, that, the majority of that has expired.
Okay.
It expired, I believe, on the 11th, the majority of it.
Okay. How do we, what is the 103 of the impact fees, the police impact fees that are expiring in October from?
So to clarify, Madam Chair, the 104,000 are expiring between now and October. So each month, there are multiple days when separate amounts are expiring. And adding all those up is 104,000 in October.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to talk to you offline about these things. Thanks, Ben.
Happy to.
Council members, do you have any questions on the impact fees? Okey doke, let's keep going.
So that takes us to section A, the new items. A1 is a request for $300,000 from Fund Balance for the National League of Cities Conference. The conference is scheduled in November this year. It will be held at the Salt Palace Convention Center. It was initially projected to cost $400,000 with an estimated 4,000 attendees. Updated estimates are about half as many attendees, so 2,000, and the cost went down to 300,000. The cost is for organizing, managing, and hosting. There are specific requirements such as a VIP dinner, providing mobile workshops, programs for spouses and children, coordinating volunteers, and holding a closing concert. If the attendance is lower than anticipated, if costs are lower than anticipated, some of the $300,000 could be returned to the city. The Department of Economic Development will be managing this budget and helping with the event.
Just keep going, Ben. If, if, this is, we're gonna just have you keep going until somebody stops you with a question.
Gotcha.
So I can't, I can't just line out and veto parts of the NLC conference request? It sounds fine except for the VIP dinner. I, that just irritates me, but, yeah.
Are you headlining the concert?
If you're talking to Chris Warren, then yes.
Oh, yeah. And me and Andrew are the only headliners that we can afford, so, yes.
Okay, Ben, let's keep going.
A2 is a request for $50,000 from Fund Balance for the city to become a member of the World Trade Center. Attachment two has the membership brochure listing the several benefits that are included. The World Trade Center leads Utah's international business development. And the administration is asking to join at the highest level of membership. It's called the ambassador level. Some of the benefits are a seat on the World Trade Center board. There are currently, I believe, 45 members of the board. It also comes with complimentary registration for the governor's trade missions. And interesting factoid, Salt Lake City accounted for over half of Utah's exports in 2017 and 2018, according to the United States Trade Representative and the Milken Institute. You may remember this item, it was pulled from a budget amendment in March last year due to the financial uncertainty facing the city. To compare membership costs, the city each year provides $50,000 to be a member of the Salt Lake Chamber, so the same amount that's being requested for the World Trade Center. And the city also provides $108,000 a year to support Economic Development Corporation of Utah. The only other city official that is listed on the World Trade Center Board of Directors is the Cedar City Mayor. Next is A3, a request for $650,000 from Fund Balance for encampment reestablishment prevention. This is for police officer voluntary overtime to provide security to health department employees, outreach staff, and social workers as part of the community commitment program. The mayor touched on this item earlier in the briefing. And I just want to note, we've heard as staff, some council members question why these services for security are not provided by other law enforcement entities. The county sheriff's department has largely stepped back from providing these law enforcement services. So Unified Police Department provides those, but only in contracted cities and unincorporated areas of the county. As a result, Salt Lake City PD is the sole law enforcement agency responsible and with jurisdiction for health department operations in Salt Lake City. I won't say more about this item unless there are questions, since it was addressed by the administration earlier.
Council members? Okey doke, keep going, Ben.
A4, this is a request for almost $32,000 from Fund Balance. It is to move the emergency management division from the police department to the fire department. The county's emergency management is part of their unified fire authority. And it's common for large municipalities to place emergency management in fire departments. The proposal includes one new full-time employee, a fire captain. And this would increase the staffing of the emergency management division. The division would continue to operate out of the public safety building where the emergency operations center is located. There is also a wage initiative for existing positions in the fire department to receive ongoing salary increases. And this is a reflection of those employees taking on new responsibilities for emergency management and supporting that division. The total cost of these changes next fiscal year is estimated at $220,000. The administration is planning a two-phase change to emergency management. Only phase one is before the council today. Phase two would be to add two additional full-time employees, another fire captain, and an accountant with additional wage incentives to existing employees in the fire department. The phase two changes would come to the council in the fiscal year 22 annual budget. And phase two is estimated to cost $278,000 ongoing. If both phases were approved, that staffing in emergency management would increase from the current five to eight. A5 is a request for $100,000 from Fund Balance for an outdoor business activity pilot program. The Department of Economic Development would assist small businesses, such as dining and retail establishments, to expand their outdoor services. One example of the use of the funds would be to reimburse city fees for these type of expansions. It was originally envisioned as providing grants. But one option before the council is to run this program through the Economic Development Loan Fund because the department isn't sure if they'll be able to use all $100,000 this fiscal year. Moving the funds to the Economic Development Loan Fund means instead of grants, they would be forgivable loans. And they could be tied to participation in existing city programs such as sustainability initiatives. $100,000 would be split in two ways. $80,000 for the grants or possibly the forgivable loans. And these would be in $5,000 increments, so that would be 16 businesses that would benefit. The remaining amount, the $20,000, would be to fund four neighborhood open streets events. And this is inspired by a similar pilot program in Seattle. One of the policy questions for the council to consider is if you would like to discuss with the administration eligibility for loan forgiveness or what types of programs the funding would be contingent upon.
I would love answers to both of those questions.
I think Director Collander is still with us.
Yes, I'm here, Ben. Can you, I'm sorry, can you please repeat the questions?
So the question is, if the funding is a forgivable loan instead of a grant, so putting the funds in the Economic Development Loan Fund, what would be the eligibility criteria for forgiveness such as participation in city programs like sustainability initiatives? Do you have eligibility criteria already in mind?
Thanks, Ben, and thanks to the council as well. We would definitely welcome recommendations from the council. But two initial thoughts that we proposed, if we do go the route of a forgivable loan are, one, we could do a DEI initiative. And two, we could do the E2 program. And it could be either a combination of both or one or the other for the forgivable loan aspect.
I don't know what those things mean.
I don't know what this means.
What are those things?
Oh, my apologies. The E2 program is a program run through sustainability that essentially is a program for businesses, especially small businesses as well as large, to be consulted based on how they can improve their efficiencies and what they can do to be more sustainably minded. So it's a program that we promote when we do our site visits now with local businesses. So it could just be one way to bring more awareness of that program. And it's something that we, I would encourage us to be talking to businesses about. And if we do get the opportunity to do that outside of this, we do that as well. And we'll be happy to update other council members alongside sustainability with that in more detail. And the DEI is the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Initiatives. And this is a growing trend amongst businesses to put forth a plan to say, how are they considering diversity, equity, and inclusion in all of their decisions? Whether it's hiring or whether it's just product development as well and other, other things. So those plans can vary quite a bit based on organization or company, but it's essentially making an effort towards equity initiatives by businesses.
Are there any other questions, council members, or follow up with that, with Ben?
Yeah, Madam Chair, so in the transmittal, I talked about a targeted approach based on equity. Is that a piece, what you were saying directly in this grant to a loan program?
Yes, what, Councilmember Johnson, thanks for that question. One of the most difficult things that we see in terms of implementing equity is in terms of regional equity for the open street. We think that one of the communities could easily be done on the west side, but the second community and having sort of a two-two split would be really. would take a little more of our business development team and engagement with the local business community to have something to event help West to by 15. So that's where we get into the time concerns. But equity is definitely something front and center, and that we'll be looking at in our policies and procedures for this program.
Thanks.
Anything else, council members? Okay. Thank you. We can keep going, Ben.
That takes us to A8. This is $6 million directly from the US Treasury or Emergency Rental Assistance. It's available to cities with populations over 200,000. The census recently updated Salt Lake City's population estimate to just over 200,000. So it was great timing for the city. The funding is to be used for household assistance, including rent, rent arrears, if you have back rent, and utilities. It is, the utilities unfortunately are basic utilities only because of federal regulations. So heating and electricity are allowed, but internet, cable, and phones are ineligible, despite arguments that in the 21st century, those are basic necessities. The funding is split, 90% must be used for the direct financial assistance. The other 10% can be used for housing stability services, such as case management, as well as administrative costs. The administration is proposing to use some of that 10%, $205,000 each year, for two full-time employees. These positions would sunset when that funding expires. They are grant funded, so they would not be part of the staffing document for the department. The employees would do monitoring, tracking, compliance, and possibly other duties like public communication. The transmittal includes a four-page program guidance and rules memo. Rentrelief.utah.gov is a state website, and the administration is proposing to use the state website as a single point for residents in Salt Lake City to apply to use this funding. The application window opened yesterday. The administration is preparing an interlocal agreement to formalize the partnership with the state. That will come to the council for approval once it's ready. The administration expects this is much faster to use the state's existing website than the city trying to create its own system and its own website from scratch. A recent update, the Treasury Department is changing some of the guidance about how the funds can be used. The previous federal administration said the funding could be used only for rental assistance. The Biden administration is expanding the allowable uses so that homeless assistance is also eligible. Rapid rehousing is one potential. I know Hand Staff is with us. They may have even more recent updates since the staff report was published. The administration is requesting a straw poll if the council supports this approach to use the state website and partner with the state. This would allow them to continue setting up the partnership. Once the interlocal agreement and Budget Amendment 7 are formally adopted, they can implement it faster. There's also a policy question, if the council would like to discuss with the administration, how to balance housing assistance funding and homeless assistance funding. And the question is for balancing those two needs for the $6 million, but also on the larger scale for the city's overall support for those two community needs.
Thank you, Ben. Council members, questions? I am interested in the policy question that was proposed. I think, given that the Biden administration is expanding the uses for, or the eligibility for the funding, I am interested in the thoughts from Hand over what sort of percentages we'd want to use for, like, it seems that these percentages might be changed a little bit, given the expansion from the Biden administration. So maybe Hand Staff could speak a little bit to that and what your thoughts are, although I know it's probably somewhat new with the, with the expansion of the eligibility, but provide what maybe you've been thinking about.
Councilmember Fowler, Council Chair Fowler, I would like to ask Tony if he could speak up about that. He's been more in the trenches a little bit with Treasury FAQs and guidance.
Sure, thanks, Lonnie. And thanks, Council Chair, for the opportunity to speak to these funds. Thankfully, at the very beginning, it was, there's very clear of just rent and utilities and rent arrears, utility arrears. Leaving out deposits would then help folks who are currently homeless or experiencing, you know, being without a place to get into a place. They since expanded that, and so deposits are thankfully eligible. These funds are, have to be prioritized for 50% AMI. They can go up to 80% AMI, but it's written into the current program that 50% will be prioritized. So with this program, they are trying to capture low income, and folks who are experiencing homelessness are eligible.
So Tony, do you have a sense of how the $6 million, you'd want to split up the $6 million between sort of these, I'm looking at them as three different pots, almost?
To clarify, just to prioritize vulnerable groups, populations?
Well, for like, how much money, what would be the percentage that we'd spend to rent and rent arrears versus spending to utilities versus spending on homeless, like rapid rehousing? And then would there be other ideas to spend money towards those experiencing homelessness?
Got it. Hard to say, to break that down. I do want to kind of put out there, though, and we can provide the follow-up documentation. There are, the city is currently funding other programs dedicated and only reserved for folks experiencing homelessness. Those amounts are fairly adequate, which is good. There's been a lot of kind of crossover with other funds in the community, our own as well. I've actually heard from providers that there's actually enough, and that's hard to say, that there's enough kind of rent assistance in the community for, you know, 0-30% AMI, folks who are currently homeless. So we can definitely provide that information and make sure that council feels good about that decision.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Lonnie.
Council Chair, one other thing is that really this is going to be reliant on the people asking for assistance. So those that come into the portal for the state and then are directed to the partners, the community partners that are working to provide those funds to those recipients, we aren't going to be able to really control those percentages, if that makes sense.
Sure. And then I'm assuming that there would be a large community outreach push to direct people to the state portal. If that were the way that the, we wanted to give you the thumbs up, right? That we want to make sure that people know how to access this.
Right, and you may notice, or you know that the, there was a very public event yesterday with Mayor Men Hall and Mayor Wilson and others providing that information to the community already.
Okay. Well, council members, does anybody else have any questions? And yes, Chris?
Yeah, Tony, I know this is something that you've been working on with some residents from my district, but I keep hearing from people that, at least from my residents, that it's not so much about paying rent. It's that there, there's nowhere else for them to go. It's a lack of options. And I know that we pay some money to, like, community programs to help them find places that are affordable if they're, if they're displaced from their current location. Does this have any money for that, or to increase that? Or is that something that's more market-driven, that we have to address by more affordable housing in Salt Lake City? Well, I know it's that too, but are there any resources for that in this request?
So the good thing about these funds, which they allow us, is basically those who are eligible, those who apply, it's statewide. So it kind of depends on where they live, what they're planning to get into. The rent, rental prices across even Salt Lake County vary greatly, depending on where you're living. The good thing about these funds too, if you're eligible, you can actually get deposit and three months of rent upfront to actually kind of help move in. Folks who come back needing additional assistance need to reapply, but then eligible households can receive up to a total of 12 months for the, their rent arrears and going forward with rent. So that is thankfully good. Another good thing that's about these funds too, sometimes HUD funds are tied to what's known as like rent reasonableness or fair market value, basically saying there's kind of, there's kind of a cap on how much, what HUD considers for our area as reasonable. And you can't go above that for assistance. Thankfully, these funds don't have those rent reasonable caps.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Then, as mentioned, Andrew.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I just, I know you're probably doing this, but do you have tons already of how we're going to track Salt Lake City residents or Salt Lake City funds within that greater portal? And then plans to report back to us about actual utilization at some point? To Chris's point about what's the need and are we matching up with the need? I'll tell them that.
So the way the state program would work is basically going off of zip codes and jurisdictions. So then, so we would basically get reimbursements from Department of Workforce Services and with addresses that we would have to verify and just double-check, but then make sure that those are eligible within our jurisdiction. The good thing, though, is that the county also has overlapping funds for Salt Lake City, same as the state as well. So even if the need is greatly, is high, and the need is expected to be high, if our funds are exhausted, there are thankfully, there's additional state and county funds that can help those households as well. Plus, there's going to be a lot of information that's going to be gathered on the households receiving this, this assistance. And so we can definitely work with our partners at the state to collect that information and report back to the council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Thank you, Lonnie. Anyone else?
Oh, yeah, I don't, sorry. I just wanted to clarify the information, the question about the funding going to homelessness. I appreciate Ben acknowledging that there's been a lot of moving parts of this process since when it was released in December. And for the homelessness component, our community partners are really working to maximize the existing federal dollars that are out there and some of our local dollars. An example that I think might align with what Tony said earlier is, like, for instance, The Road Home has rapid rehousing funding and some shared housing programs that you have approved. And those dollars have not been able to get out into the community as quickly as maybe we would have assumed. So when Tony said there are sufficient funds or kind of enough that those are, those are words coming from our partners, saying, you know, we don't necessarily have a dire need for these treasury dollars to go towards homelessness.
Great, thank you.
And just really quick to follow up on Lonnie, and thank you, Lonnie, for making that clear. And then again, because these are already contracted programs that go through September of 2022. So that's what they're kind of thinking, looking at like the current programs and funding that have available to address folks who are experiencing homelessness.
Andrew?
Thanks for the clarification. One more question you may not have answers to. Can this money be used for temporary housing?
So currently, the program requires a lease-in place or a potential lease.
Okay. I think to Chris's point earlier, there's this lack of places to go. So we got a lot of homeless people. We got no apartments. So no matter what subsidies we've got, we can't get people in. That's why I was asking about the temporary piece, because we may have a pretty significant need in the next six to eight months for temporary housing. But it sounds like these funds are not going to be eligible to be used for that purpose, if I heard you correctly. Or a congregant shelter in the future. This has got to be just rental leases, right?
Cindy?
Let me just ask a clarifying question. A few minutes ago, we were talking about one set of funding that was, that the rules were still changing and that there was going to be some more opportunity to use that funding for, for addressing homelessness-related issues. Is, is there any chance that this particular program will be changing at all? And there might be some opportunity to use funds for addressing the issues with homeless individuals? Like the temporary shelter?
Council Chair, would you like me to respond to that? Cindy, thanks for that question. Created some confusion about the different guidance and the things that we've learned since, for instance, the first budget amendment documentation went to council staff. The direction from the Treasury, which is the funding mechanism that this is coming from, has changed from, as Ben mentioned, the previous administration. And now with the Biden administration, a lot more flexibility and focus on providing rent assistance to not just, you know, the traditional rent lease type of arrangements, but for also for folks that are experiencing homelessness or that are on the edge of experiencing homelessness. So the changes that we've learned in the last month have included more clarity about being able to use it for more non-traditional homelessness prevention.
Okay, so, but you're saying that the flexibility isn't adequate to have it applied to temporary housing, is that right?
That's our understanding from the, the guidance we're seeing from the Treasury, yes.
Okay. And then how do you deal with the digital divide issue in terms of the slower-income individuals or families who have to navigate the state system? How, how, first of all, how do they know about the program at all, besides the press conference? And how do they, is there someone that helps them access it? Do they go through CAP? Or can you tell us just a little more about that?
Yes, thank you. Exactly the example that you gave of, of our community action partners. UCA has many translation options available, and they deal with not only internet access to their, the requests from residents, but also for phone calls, emails, and even text messages to come. So a variety of ways to communicate and receive the information for requests. So I appreciate you pointing out the digital divide, the, the challenges for folks that don't have as, as good of internet as I do right now. So I hope that answers your question, Cindy.
Yes, thanks.
Okay, everyone, we are 25 minutes. I just looked at the clock because I was actually very intrigued in what was happening, and we're 25 minutes over. This is the, as Ben, like he mentioned, the, the administration is looking for a straw poll regarding not the usage of the funds, but just whether or not to move forward with this, with the partnership with the state to, for the application of the funds. So I just gave a straw poll. Any discussion on it? Any, show your support or lack thereof with your thumbs. It looks like that is unanimous. Okay, with that- Okay, with that, we are going to stop at the this particular item. We will come back to budget amendment number seven next Tuesday to continue our briefing, but we need to move on in. This agenda. So with that, we are going to go to agenda item number seven. I didn't know if somebody said my name. To, and by the way, thank you Lonnie, thank you Tony, to the housing authority update. I will turn the time over to Allison.
Good afternoon again, council members. We have today Dan Nakerman, who is the director of the. Housing Authority of Salt Lake City to present. Basically some updates and some plans that they have been working on. He has also. Invited several of his colleagues to come along and they may present parts of this presentation as well. So I'm just going to turn everything over to him.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I will be very brief since we're running behind schedule. I'd like to start by, we have not appeared before the council in some time and there's some new council members. That don't really know us too well, so we'd like to do this more often. I just want to, our our chair is on today and that is Brenda Koga. Cindy Gus Jensen is on our board, David Litvak, you may know them, Palmer DePaulus, you may know him. Dave Mansell and to some extent. Phil Bernal is on one of our primary boards. And I also have my staff on today, Kim Wilford, who's our deputy executive director and Zach Pau. Who is one of our deputy directors, so also runs all of the homeless programs. I'm going to quickly show you, very quickly show you our draft annual report for 2020. And then I'm going to get into a little bit more detail in a PowerPoint of who, what, where, why. And we're looking for you to tell us how and when. And also to tell us what share of that $6 million we can have. No, I'm sorry, I had slipped that in. Just, and this is a check in with the council. We are, again, glad to come back as often as you would like. We're particularly interested in further discussing in a more detailed session. Some of our policies, some of our assistance to seniors, veterans, families, persons with disabilities. Primarily our homeless response, which is probably quite a bit bigger than you realize. And then also real estate development and and sort of a sharing and gathering of resources. With that, I'll either grab the annual report myself or. Oh, there we go. Robert is sharing it. We'll be going through this very briefly, as I mentioned. And I'll see if I don't know how much control I have over it, Robert, but. This is our our rough annual report for the year that just ended. Kind of who who we are, some of our subsidiaries, where we're headed, et cetera. Next slide. Next slide. I just on that last slide, we have our draft. 2020 finance financials as of yesterday, so they weren't quite ready for this presentation. This, again, we'll go through these very quickly, but we have many, many programs and many properties. Unlike most other housing authorities, we are very aggressive in grant attainment. And that ends up, you know, resulting in programs. That often have their own rules and their own sources of funds. Next slide. These, this is a small example of those various types of programs. The first is the voucher. We have housing opportunities for persons with AIDS. That's an unfortunate HUD. Acronym protest based vouchers, a program called Shelter Plus Care. We're one of the few housing authorities in the whole region. Regional states have a TANF program. VAS, which is Veterans Supportive Housing. And then we do a lot of special needs and hard to house housing, which you probably know about. We do some of this under HAME, which is one of our two 501(c)(3) nonprofits. It's considered an instrumentality of the housing authority and it's been in existence for 27 years. Next slide. One of the big things that's been happening since this is an update is what HUD calls the Rental Assistance Demonstration Program or RAD. HUD has never done anything rad in my history with them, but they did choose that acronym for this particular program. It, the way to describe it is old public housing throughout the United States. Needs a solution and as the capital needs wear on and on without specific funding. One of the ways over the last five years that HUD has designed a solution is this Rental Assistance Demonstration Program. Which basically converts old public housing or at least an old program in the case of Rend and Terrace. Into what amounts to a very section eight like program. Just again, a reminder, in case you don't know, both of those programs, section eight and public housing. The tenants pay basically 30 to 40% of their income towards rent. And then we subsidize the rest through the federal government. So as an example, if it's one family might have a household income of 35 or 40,000. The other might have a household income of of 3,000 a year. They obviously pay completely different rent structures and then we fill in the rest. Next slide, please. Just some of our activities since we last met. Next slide, please. These next three slides will go through very quickly because we're going to go through them again in a minute, but. These, these are a sampling of some of our properties that you've seen around town, Jefferson Circle, Romney Plaza. Plaza. Our new senator loves the name of that site. Next slide. Knight East Lofts, which you may be aware of Cambridge Grove Cove. And some of the smaller units or smaller complexes you see on the list. Next slide. And then these are some of our remaining properties. Jefferson School, one and two are some of the larger properties that you see on that list. They're in the ballpark neighborhood. Next slide. And then Sunrise Metro, which is quite famous as a 100 unit, all permanent supportive housing. And then some smaller and larger complexes all over Salt Lake City. By the way, all of our properties are in Salt Lake City proper. Next slide. One of the, some of the areas we're headed into in the next year. We're very interested in landlord incentives as we. Well, there's several reasons. One is there's a very progressive program at HUD called Moving to Work, which is. Is not really, does not really describe the program. But anyway, one of the the ways to apply this coming year is through landlord incentives. And we've been pretty good at it. We've had a lot of assistance for residents. To create a better relationship with private landlords. And and that's a really good way to increase the number of people housed, as Councilmember Johnson was mentioning. We are ready to at least consider home buyer programs, first time home buyer programs. As I mentioned, we are definitely developers and we have about three projects coming up. We're always looking for acquisition as well. And the main thing we do is continue to support our seniors, our families. The chronically homeless and others that desperately need housing. With that, we'll get into a little more detail. With the next PowerPoint after this last slide. This you may have seen on State Street near the 1700 block. It's a 93. Unit mixed use development, mixed use meaning there's commercial space on the ground floor and there's also. Wide range of income levels, including some specifically set aside for the previously homeless. And for victims of domestic violence. It is pretty much on schedule. This slide is a little old where we thought it might arrive mid-year this year. But it looks like by fall, it's, it's actually, you hear this a lot from developers. In this case, it's. 100% accurate that we're on schedule and on budget. With that, we'll go to the next PowerPoint and get into a little more detail. Next slide. We're going to talk quickly about the agency background. We kind of separate our areas into affordable housing and homeless response. We're going to ask you to help us celebrate some of our highlights. And report on some of our struggles and then some of our next steps. This slide's kind of important. There's 3,400 housing authorities in the US. We're a medium sized agency. We count on almost 80% federal funding. As a matter of fact. I I'll report a little bit later on how much funding we are awarded from the city and the state. Our two main programs are public housing and section eight. We house more than or almost 10,000 people. We are somewhat arms length, but city appointed. You appoint our. Commissioners as does the mayor. You jointly appoint. Or the mayor points and the council confirms. Our annual budget is about $41 million. We have about 6.6 million in reserves. We have a little under 100 employees. And the main thing I like to emphasize is that we have all the major business systems, finance, human resources. Information systems, maintenance. We're we're kind of like a public works. Department in many areas. And then we're a little bit unusual compared to those other 3,400 housing authorities. And the amount of real estate development we do and the fact that we have two nonprofits actively. Doing work and then some of our recent homeless efforts and senior housing efforts. Which were a big focus the last 10 years are are fairly unusual for housing authorities as well. A lot of homeless response efforts often come through counties and cities and not necessarily through housing authorities. And I do want to mention that we're the largest housing authority in Utah, but the county housing authority. Housing Connect is also similar to us in in some most of these areas. So we're lucky in the state to have about 13 housing authorities with two, two of them doing a very wide variety of work. Next slide. And I do want to emphasize it is our primary mission. People talk a lot about affordable housing. But obviously, that's our primary mission. Next slide. We, people talk a lot about the east side and west side. Yeah, I'll just let kind of these dots speak for themselves. Most of these are affordable. We do have some market rate housing. And we're pretty widely spread out in the city with a bit of a concentration towards downtown. Next slide. We're going to go through these very quickly, just samplings of our properties. In fact, if you want to stop and ask a question about any particular one. It's up to the chair, but let me know. This is Rend and Terrace 70 units. This is one that's being taken out of public housing through RAD. And turned into a more section eight like program, which by the way is better for the residents. There's more, a better bottom line for services and for maintenance to be in RAD. Next slide. Knight East Lofts, next slide. Taylor Gardens right near our main office. Ballpark Community Council used to have their meetings here. Jefferson School Apartments, we have an RFQ out on the street to refinance two of these properties. In the multi, multimillion dollar range for the refinancing. Next slide. Taylor Springs next door to that. Denver Street, you may have heard about. I just wanted to revisit it. For those of you who don't know about it, we took an 11 unit apartment site. We carefully and respectfully and expensively relocated the residents. And the, they were near market rate residents and we added. Enough units to have 22 units for the severe and persistent mentally ill. We also had to. Engage the neighborhood in allowing us to do this. And we're very, very proud of it. Volunteers of America is our partner. We did all the financing and sort of the hard housing, if you will. We also added one new community building to the site. Next slide. That's just one of the the buildings. They've all been rehabbed, but they still look somewhat like this. Next slide of Denver Street. Ballard House, as you may be aware of, 72 units built on the the VA campus. Another very unusual thing in the United States to actually lease the land underneath and build on site. Sunrise Metro, we already mentioned 100 units. Freedom Landing, 109 units for veterans. That was a converted motel. Which that subject comes up more and more in the city. And we'd love to engage in that. We, we are very supportive of. Converting motels into permanent housing or tearing down motels and building on those sites. I've looked at so many, they call me the motel whisperer now. And then for those of you who haven't seen it, we opened this this past year, 100 permanent supportive housing units, Pamela's Place. It's been very unique. It's starting to win awards around the country, two of them so far. The, one of the unique things is to have 100% PSH. Some people think that's not a good living environment. We've sort of proven it's, it works. Both at Sunrise and at the other veteran site where there's 112 units. This one, one of the magic pieces is it's, the units are small. There's a lot of natural light. The the site was substandard being long and narrow, but that actually turned out to be somewhat of an asset as far as cost. This will be the lowest cost tax credit property built in the last five years in in the Salt Lake area. And yet the materials are are great and high quality. But the very, very magic part of it is a full clinic on the ground floor. We did that by partnering with the Go Shoot Indian Tribe. Which is the politically correct way to refer to the tribe. And it's because of, as Councilmember Johnson knows, because of the. Sovereign status of sovereign nation status, there's some. there's some, there's some caps that don't exist regarding Medicare and Medicaid reimbursement, which is really the financial part that makes the clinic work. Another very unique thing to this site is there's a psychiatrist onsite at least three days a week, which is super valuable and something you rarely see across the country. A couple of interior shots follow. That's kind of part of the lobby area, and there's a kitchen out in the lobby area for events. And this is what you see when you walk into the full clinic. There's exam rooms, et cetera. I knew after, after going through all those spreadsheets, you'd enjoy a lot of pictures. This is the Capitol Homes that's under construction, ninety-three units on the seventeen-hundred block. It's even further along now than the pictures show. And this is an interesting project that many don't know about. City Plaza was built in nineteen seventy-one and seventy-two. It was originally three hundred units. It's now two hundred ninety-nine units. Both housing authorities owned the half of this property. So both housing authorities have partnered under your leadership and the leadership of our commissioners in putting this in mostly into the RAD program that I mentioned earlier. This will create a very, enough funding for a very extensive renovation, very careful, partial relocation. What you don't see in the picture is the high-rise that's next to it that is part of the county's project. And so we've been, and it's a very complicated financing. We're headed towards closing the financing in the next couple of months, but a very exciting way to make this permanent for another fifty to a hundred years. For seniors, by the way, this will be almost all seniors over the age of sixty-two. Some of the other sites that you saw are for seniors over the age of fifty-five. I know I heard some gasps in the room, but. Next slide. This is something we're working with Bryn Mawr on, on North Temple. We've been working on it for a couple of years. I'm sure you're familiar with it. We had the original RFP that brought Bryn Mawr into town to work on these projects with us. I wanted to spend a little time on our budget for the year. This is our two thousand twenty-one budget. And you can see housing assistance payments at the top. That's really the amount that we spend every year and give to private landlords, twenty-four million five hundred and fifteen thousand. We are a landlord for some of those units ourselves, but you can see what a big piece of our program, Section Eight, is in that twenty-four million five hundred and fifteen thousand number. As usual, HUD has two or three names for everything, and the other name for Section Eight is Housing Choice Vouchers. As you scroll down, our expenses, you'll see maintenance, et cetera. And then our revenues, about twenty-six percent of our revenues come from rental revenue. And I just might, to put some of your earlier discussion into perspective, we are presently, our residents are about three hundred thousand dollars behind in their rent for the COVID period. Keeping in mind that a lot of our residents are fixed incomes who actually don't suffer as much by losing a job, as an example. But it's still a very desperate, desperate group out there that have fallen well behind in their rent. Federal funds end up being about seventy-eight percent of our budget. I think we said, and then, as I mentioned, the voucher, the voucher program is at twenty-four million in revenue. And then we've been very aggressive, as I mentioned on the outset, in our grants and other attainment of, of programs that we don't really, we're not really charged to do. We just, especially some of the staff members that are on, Zach Pow and Kim Wilford, are very aggressive in, in bringing programs to Salt Lake City. Just a little pie chart demonstrating the last slide. Next slide, please. I, we're, I, I mentioned on the outset, we have both programs and properties. Now this, I would like to specifically talk about our homeless response. And I'm sorry to use the acronyms. They, they won't fit some of the names of these programs, but we have the VASH, which is really the Veterans/Section Eight Assistance, Shelter Plus Care, Housing Opportunities for People with AIDS, Family Unification Program, FUP, one of my favorite acronyms, PVV's Project Base Vouchers, FSS is Family Self-Sufficiency, where as families' rents go up, we put them in escrow and give them back to them after five years of economic advancement. TANF, everybody knows, and then we're doing more and more on landlord outreach. That's been a real key to keeping people housed and finding people new housing. And then, and then the homeless-related properties are on the right column there. If you go near the bottom, we also support others in our partnerships. As an example, with First Step House, we helped finance their last phase of their development. With Magnolia, which you're probably familiar with, sixty-five units of permanent supportive housing we helped finance. We converted fault line from a market rate property to a homeless-oriented property. And then there's Denver Street, which we've already talked about. Next slide, please. I, these next four or five slides will roll through very fast, but I, and stop if you want to talk about any of them, but I, I, I just, we're just wanting to give you the reality that we run a lot of small programs that help many families, and they, again, often have their own set of regulations or funding. But we'll roll through these very quickly. We have a rapid rehousing. We have a family homeless prevention program. Next slide. Next slide, please. Landlord Assurance Program. We filed about eighty claims for landlords. We have a barrier relief program that helped about thirty-one households this past year. Next slide. Landlord Outreach and Incentives. We've gotten seventy new landlords the past year to participate in Section Eight. We do help with security deposits. Eighty households were assisted this past year. Next slide. I mentioned the Family Self-Sufficiency Program, where, where rent is put into escrow. We do supply, that number is wrong. That's a hundred and, or sorry, seventy-eight residents that were specifically served at Sunrise Metro. And thirty-one of those residents, again, that's a hundred units, probably about a hundred and four people. Thirty-one have maintained employment throughout the COVID period. Next slide. And this kind of is a roll-up of the number of people we house and the types of housing, separated very simply on purpose into both voucher-related versus properties. And next slide. These are some of the things we like to brag about, our real estate development. Section Eight, we've been deemed a high performer by HUD. We have leveraged vouchers with our partners by, by helping finance more housing. Again, I, I love the statement I heard earlier about there's just not enough apartments. There's a brand-new apartment market report for the greater Salt Lake area by Cushman and Wakefield. It shows, and I mean hot off the press, it shows thirty-four apartment projects close and in Salt Lake City under construction. Four of those thirty-four are affordable. I'll just let that sink in. And then three of the thirty-four have a small portion of affordable. As you probably know, sometimes they're set-aside units in tax credits of five, ten, or fifteen units that are, that are affordable, especially for some of the hard-to-house populations. So when you hear that there's all kinds of affordable housing all over the valley being built, it's just not true. All of the rest of those thirty-four apartment complexes are market rate, and there's a total of six thousand seven hundred and thirty-five units under construction in two thousand twenty. Yeah, fifty-three percent of those, by the way, are right in the city limits. Next slide. Oh, I'm sorry. We're also, on the replacement of grant per diem, we had a, an old-fashioned VA program that was kind of dragging down the finances of that area. We've completely solved that through the leadership of our board and even the leadership of our elected officials in Washington, D.C., including the VA Secretary himself. This replacement of public housing, we're very, almost done with that. There will be a point this next year where we won't have any public housing. We're proud of coordinating with the city and the county and everything that means. We're very part of our permanent supportive housing record. We've done a lot of the recent projects that are permanent supportive. We sincerely appreciate the RDA assistance we've received. We're thrilled that the leaders on all levels seem to be very conscious and supportive of supportive housing. Our overall budgets are almost always positive over the years. We're proud of our new grant attainment and our new partners, and especially proud of improving our customer service dramatically over the last few years. We had a pretty big problem in that area, and we consciously worked on it multifaceted ways. You'll occasionally hear complaints about the city and the county housing authority. We always are very responsive on those complaints, and we also hope everyone understands by housing ten thousand people and by also having five to six thousand people on our waiting lists, out of those sixteen thousand people, we are going to have some concerns expressed fairly regularly. With that, we're going to show you what we, what's, what's, where we're struggling a little. Some of our internal systems, in the last year and a half, I'd say we've, we've had, last year's audit, as an example, was five or six months late. That's just not okay. This year, we're on top of it, and, and it's pretty much on time. As an example, we had our draft financial statements yesterday, as I, and then our tax credit properties have had all of their tax returns prepared. So we've had some staffing and stability issues internally. Section Eight balancing means we, we, we get a certain amount of money, and we have a certain amount of units in the Section Eight program, and we have to keep those balanced throughout the year so that we don't underspend or underhouse, and more importantly, so that we don't overspend. Now, we have not overspent, but it's something we just need to, the, the market is changing so rapidly. The item below, a couple of items below that, Section Eight landlords are weaning is a serious problem, where, where landlords can get more rent, and they're less interested in Section Eight. Our work order system's relatively mundane issue, but we, we do a lot of maintenance and repairs on a lot of units, and we need to just bring that up to higher technology systems. And as I mentioned, our personnel systems and recruiting, we've had kind of a mixed bag of results with that. We did systemically raise our salary levels about three years ago, but we still don't get much interest when we recruit for jobs or don't seem to attract super-qualified staff. I did want to quickly mention our COVID response. We reacted on March first very, very quickly. There's kind of a reason behind that that we won't go into. We did purchase personal protection equipment in mass quantities at the beginning. We still have mass quantities. We went out of our way to protect our senior and homeless populations. A reminder that we have an unusual business where a lot of our work really is hands-on in the units and around the units. And of course, we also have office environments, and we also have an unusually frail, I'm generalizing on purpose, elderly and homeless population. We came through pretty successfully. We've had very few serious issues either with our residents or our employees. We have done vaccinations onsite over the last month, especially. That rent's due, as I mentioned, has now grown to three hundred thousand. We haven't done a single eviction, especially for rent. We did change out staffing dramatically in March of last year. We sent certain staff home, especially if their health conditions were of a certain age. We added technology galore so that people could work from home. This is very unusual. We paid our frontline staff volunteers at a hundred and fifty percent pay rate. That worked out very, very well. It was, of course, very, very expensive, but that kept, you know, single maintenance person going into the units in each case pretty regularly. So we kept the basics afloat, and we intend to be fully back to normal staffing with everyone at the office, except for our, you know, normal telecommute policies by early April. Next slide. Some of our new efforts, and this is the second to last slide. The, the RAB I mentioned, HUD calls that disposition, which is a, it's really upgrading of, of the buildings and the program. Our housing navigators, we intend to keep that going and have even better success rates. We just thought we'd throw out there that most of us are interested someday in inclusionary zoning. I'd be glad to discuss that at some point. We don't, we don't, I don't follow the premise that the more expensive it is to build, that those costs are always passed on to the consumer. In my experience, most developers sell houses for the most they can sell them for and rent apartments for the most rent they can get. I'm not bad-mouthing developers. We're developers ourselves, but please keep that principle in mind. We do work very closely with Washington, D.C., always have. We, because of our, we, we have consultants, consultants there, and we maintain great relationships. Maintain great relationships. We are hoping someday that the consider, and again, I know people are cringing that. Somebody considers eminent domain someday for very. Irresponsible landlords. As as an example, some of the motel owners that we have dealt with. We're focusing a lot on job training, and and as I mentioned, possible first-time homeownership. We're very interested in continuing to mix developments income-wise and use-wise. There's another concept called density bonus that we're interested as far as zoning and. And planning for the future. And clearly, we're making efforts and needed efforts for more minority business enterprise participation. And women business enterprise participation. And disadvantaged business participation. We expect to get that under control and to help other public agencies do better in those areas as well. Next, next and final slide. We we appreciate the city's gap financing and grants for our developments. We hope the city continues to consider us your sort of in-house developers whenever possible. We hope that the city as a whole and the city leaders help us gain entry into HUD's Moving to Work program. We are talking to our our congressional members about. Special projects and pilot projects such as landlord incentives. Better homeless response, family unification. Transportation Nexus is one of the recent subjects with them. And of course, equity and minority business and women business. And then, and then we we see municipal best practices, perhaps because we use federal money. We see them all over the country, and we hope. Everybody pays attention to the those best practice examples. Before I end, one thing I want to say we're most proud of are what we call kind of our one-offs. Their their programs and projects that are not really prescribed to us, that are not really directly funded to us. But that we see the local need and respond. Quick, quick examples of that are that clinic at Pamela's Place. We have a program called Human Rights Housing that the mayor helped us launch. And our board members, it's really directed at the human trafficking issue. In the US, it's been up and running since last summer. And the Asian Association of Utah is our partner. They. The Denver Street Project would be another example where it's a program specifically designed for the severe and persistent mentally ill. The fact that we're exiting public housing is an example. The fact that we built a veterans property on the campus. We led that framing cohort project that you may be familiar with. With Salt Lake City Community College. And so we're very proud of also. Creating and aggressively. Responding to local needs with these federal sources that are sometimes one size fits all. And with that, I. Would answer any questions if I haven't gone over my time.
Thank you, Dan. We appreciate you being here with us. I am going to ask council members to, if you have questions, we'll have Dan back again. But if you have questions to hold your questions or maybe talk to Dan offline, we. Had a very big agenda with lots of important items on them and have gone quite a bit over time. But I do want to say to Dan and your staff and Ms. Koga, who I believe is your chair. That thank you for being here with us. Thank you for the work that you do. I always love seeing really how much work you're doing within the city for affordable housing and. I'm so grateful for you thinking outside the box and. And helping our most vulnerable populations in different ways. So. Thank you again for being here and for that presentation, and. We look forward to having you back. With that.
Thank you.
With that, everyone, we are going to postpone the discussion on SROs. Or, excuse me, shared housing, this shared housing zoning text amendment. I think there are a lot of passionate feelings about this, and I want to be able to dedicate the time necessary to have. A good discussion, and and I think we're kind of running up against that time at this point, so we'll be postponing this agenda item. With that, I believe Cindy has some announcement. I don't, there's not a report from the Chair or Vice Chair that I'm aware of, James? I got a head shake note, so I'll turn it over to Cindy for some announcements.
Announcements. First is the Citizen Compensation Advisory Committee. The council has three appointments and the mayor has three appointments. Two of the council appointments come to the end of their term this August. Both of the individuals serving are eligible to serve second terms, and they are both interested. Their names and some information is listed there on your announcement, so if you have. Any concerns or questions, please let Ben know on our staff. And then also, we have an upcoming leadership meeting with the school district. And our Chair, Vice Chair and RDA Chair will be joining with the leadership of the school district. And when we do this, we check with council members to see. Whether anyone has agenda items that they would like to be certain are discussed at that. Meeting, so please let any member of the council staff know if you have any agenda item suggestions for that meeting. And that is on the nineteenth. Of this month. And then the final item is that in the announcements, the staff has included some reports about the S-line. And these are old reports from the previous go-round. There was some funding appropriated by the state. In the session, and so staff pulled this information out for your convenience, so. It it was a very controversial. By sharing this, we don't mean to reignite any controversy. I think that what's being discussed now does not relight that conflict controversy, it just. Perhaps moves the S-line a little bit closer to the Sugar House core, so we're sharing that for your information. And I'm sure there will be more information forthcoming, and that is it.
Excellent. Thank you, Cindy. At this time, we do need to go into a closed session for a little bit. So I am looking for a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we adjourn this meeting and go into a closed session.
For.
Advising Council?
Yes, for the purpose of advising council, thank you.
Reasonable eminent litigation. Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Good. Madam Chair.
Wow, everyone. Okay, I have a motion by. Councilmember Wharton and a second by Councilmember Valdemoros. I'm going to take a roll call. Councilmember Valdemoros.
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers.
Yes.
Councilmember Wharton.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan.
Yes.
Councilmember Mano.
Yes.
And I am a yes, that is unanimous. There is a separate link, I believe, for the closed session. Let's hop in there and have a, and yes. Right? Isn't there a separate link? Will somebody confirm that?
That's correct.
Sure. Thank you.
I don't know that I or Paul Nielsen have that link. Could someone resend those to us, please?
Sir, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us for Capital City News. It's been one year since the COVID-nineteen pandemic arrived in Utah. As the Utah Department of Health continues to distribute vaccines in phases. Please be reminded to help our community stay safe by following the CDC guidelines. This March, we also celebrate Women's History Month. And on our episode this week, we hear from Laura Briefer, the Director of the City's Department of Public Utilities. About her role as the first woman to lead the department. And our history minute is about Arlene Dalton and her claim to fame as the story princess. Let's get started with our legislative update and look back.
At its March second meeting, the city council.